stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, our servicemen, and service women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll. Cologne Hayes. She's here. Condon. Crowe. Linehan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Seika. Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafora. Spatafora here. We are going to be, for the members of the audience, we are going to be taking this little unorthodox approach. We are going to recess for about 10 minutes and go and raise the pride flag for this month, but we will be back. And I also, because we do have several members of the audience, which is great to see, just remind everybody, just to silence your phones, we're going to be giving a couple of presentations, and this room has very good acoustics, and sometimes it's too good. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll. Oh, you already did that. First order of business. Yep. On Council McDonald's motion to, Council Karen McDonald's motion to take his paper out of order, all those in favor? All those opposed? Council McDonald, you have the floor. Let me turn your mic on, Counselor. There you go.
Thank you. I want to just appreciate that Pride Month, LGBTQ Pride Month, is an opportunity to express our commitment to equity across the gender and sexuality spectrum, which is very much not always been the case, but is a core part of my commitment as a leader in the city. It's a core part of my faith community as a Unitarian Universalist. It's a core part of who I am as a person. I know many of my councilors share that commitment, so I'm glad to do that. I did want to know if Counselor O'Malley, as the openly LGBTQ member of the council, wanted to speak to it, and so I yield any additional time to Counselor O'Malley.
Okay, Counselor. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank the sponsor, Counselor McDonald, for bringing this forward. It's really great to have allies that will bring these forwards, and it's not always on the individual member or members. It's really great to have a team, a community. And I do also want to recognize and have a moment of silence for Dee Campbell Tompkins, who unfortunately passed away, and was a really driving force in our community, for the LGBTQ community. I'd like to dedicate this resolution to her, her life and her memory, as well as the raising of the pride flag, which we will do when we take our recess. So if we could rise for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Clerk will read the resolve. Resolved that the Malden City Council celebrates LGBTQ Pride Month, whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, non-binary, and queer LGBTQ people in Malden have made vital contributions to all areas of business, public service, culture, and community life. And whereas the celebration of Pride Month each June is noted in the protest of June 28th, 1969, following a law enforcement raid of the Stonewall Inn, an LGBTQ club in New York City, as a pioneering moment in the LGBTQ movement for equality. And whereas throughout much of the history of the United States, non, heteronormative, heteronormative relationships and gender identities were criminalized, LGBTQ people continue to face disparities in employment, healthcare, education, housing, and many other areas. And many states have enacted new anti-LGBTQ legislation in the past few months. And whereas LGBTQ people, particularly those who are transgender, non-binary, and black, and indigenous, and people of color, BIPOC, face a disproportionately high risk of becoming victims of violent hate crimes. And whereas LGBTQ youth are at increased risk of bullying, mental health concerns, homelessness, and suicide. And whereas pride is a celebration of the full spectrum of humanity, creative expression, and visibility in spite of marginalization, which is hosted by thousands of communities each year across the globe. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Malden City Council supports the rights, freedoms, and equal treatment of LGBTQ people, affirms the importance of creating a welcoming community for all, and encourages the celebration of June as LGBTQ Pride Month, to honor the contribution, struggles, and dignity of LGBTQ members of our community. So that is on several councilors, but I do notice there are some missing. So before I read all the names, I know Counselor Crowe's name is missing, Counselor Murphy's name is missing, Counselor Condon's name is missing, Counselor Linehan's name is, you want to speak?
I was just going to ask to be added.
Yep. Okay, so I'm gonna, I think the entire council wants to sponsor this. If there's no objections from the sponsor, Counselor. Okay, so for all the councils, on Counselor Karen McDonald's motion to pass the resolve, all in favor? All opposed? The resolve has been passed. Next order of business. Yeah, that'd be great. On Council McDonald's motion to recess. Oh, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, all those in favor? All those opposed? Eyes have it, we are recessed. For the audience, if you want to participate, and then we'll be raising the flag, more the merrier. It should be about five minutes. Thank you.[387.93]
Available online, which is very exciting for us, but also available as a PDF, as they usually are. So I was hoping tonight to do just a quick presentation on the CPC process. And I'll do my best to answer any questions that anybody might have afterwards. But we do do biannual informational hearings, which are open to public questioning and also recorded. And they are on our website, on the city site at cityofmalden.org, and on our Malden CPC's Facebook page. And those go delve deeper than what I'm going to touch on tonight. This is just going to be a brief process presentation. Daniel Koff is our coordinator, and he is also available for questions at cpcmalden@cityofmalden.org, or he has office hours on Wednesdays from 12 to 4:00 in the City Hall on the third floor. So tonight, I just, if you play the next slide for us. Tonight, I just want to, as you guys are all probably aware, the Mass General Law 44B is the Community Preservation Act legislation, which specifies how CPA funds can be used. There are four project categories: the Historic Preservation, Affordable Housing, and Open Space, and Recreation Space. And in Malden, we combine those to be one category: Open Space and Recreation. And although city councilors are not eligible to present applications to us due to a conflict of interest when you all vote on whether to approve the project or not, the, we do look for city councillor's support because that lets the committee know that there is, this project aligns with the goals and priorities and vision of our city as a whole, and helps us make our decision as well. So the CPC strives to inspire residents to submit applications, but city departments and registered nonprofit groups and businesses are also eligible applicants. However, our main goal at the CPC is to get residents active and involved in their community, and to come to us with potential ideas and help us work with them to bring their project idea to fruition. And that allows the residents to take pride in ownership of a project, their neighborhood, and our city. We also have a list of potential project ideas in Appendix 5 of our CPC plan, and that's used to spark inspiration for applications. So I encourage everyone to take a look at that Appendix 5. And keep in mind that within each of these categories is a wide range of project possibilities. So, for example, within the Open Space category, we could rehab a park, or we could also use the money to fund cleanup of a contaminated soil from a site like Roosevelt Park. We could also purchase land for conservation to create wildlife habitats or pollinator parks. Within Affordable Housing, we could build or buy structures to create affordable housing, but we can also provide rental assistance for people meeting certain criteria. Within Historic Preservation, we can purchase historic buildings for city use, or restore working buildings like our central fire station. And we can also help to preserve important city documents, or conduct studies to create a historic district. There is also, we could fund evaluations for restorations of structures, historic structures. So I encourage everyone to take a look at that list in Appendix 5 of our plan, and also to check out the Community Preservation Coalition's website at communitypreservation.org. They're a guiding organization, and they have a great database of projects that other cities have done. It's good to give you an idea of the kinds of things that CPC can do. Because if you have the tiniest idea for something in one of these categories, we encourage you to bring it to us, and we can try to figure out a way to make it happen. So the next slide shows our full schedule, and the CPC will be accepting full applications until September 13th. And this schedule can also be found in our application instructions on our CPC landing site on the city's website. Our pre-application period technically ends today at midnight, but that is a soft deadline. It kind of helps us to get an idea of what applications are to be expecting, and helps us to make sure that anyone that's planning to spend a couple months on putting together an application actually has a project that's eligible. So we'll be accepting pre-apps all through the summer, because it is technically, the pre-app is a mandatory step before you submit an application, just so that we can help you to know if your project is eligible and meets the CPA criteria. So again, the pre-app is not a hard deadline. It just gives, having it be today helps give the applicant more time to complete their application. We do also occasionally accept applications off-cycle under extenuating circumstances, and this would be like a time-sensitive contract issue, or a matching grant deadline, something like that. And if for some reason, through the pre-app process, we find that the project is not eligible, we do try to work with the applicant to figure out how to make it eligible. So it's not a done deal. If your idea is not CPA-eligible, we can try to work with you to figure out a way to make it fit within the criteria. So as I mentioned, the full applications are due September 13th, and once we receive all the final applications in the fall, we will review those to make sure all questions are fully answered and supporting documents are provided. And then we hold a public hearing where the applicants present their project to the public, and we take calls, comments from residents for or against the project. And then we will take all of that information back with us to next meeting, and we will deliberate then on the project to decide whether we should move it forward to present to you all. Once the, once we do decide that the project is eligible and meets all the criteria, we present it to the city council and the mayor, and they have the final sign-off. You all know, have the final sign-off. So once, you can see, once a project is recommended to you all from the CPC, it has gone through a pretty lengthy review process and vetting process, to make sure that it aligns with CPA criteria, as well as the goals and priorities of the city. And once the project is final approved by the city council and the mayor, the CPC will draw up the grant agreement and will release funds for the project in early 2023. So that's kind of our process in a nutshell. The next slide shows our historic expenditures. And from this slide, you can see, since the CPC began accepting applications in fiscal year 2019, I'm proud to say we've awarded almost $5 million to projects across the city. And our projections for fiscal year '23 expect another approximately $1 million available for projects to improve and enhance our city. Also very noticeable by this graphic is how much money CPC has awarded to preservation and rehabilitation of Open Space and Recreation Space. That's the green areas. Almost 80% of the money we have historically awarded has gone to rehabilitate, create, or preserve Malden's open and park spaces. Affordable housing and historic preservation are equally important to our committee as the Open Space and Recreation, but because we're not receiving applications in those areas, they're significantly lagging in funding. So I want to make sure that everyone knows that the CPC believes that Historic Preservation and Affordable Housing are just as important as Open Space and Recreation. And one of our goals is to encourage more applications in those areas. Education around CPA, doing presentations like this, is something that we're always striving to improve. And our committee is regularly discussing how to get our message of funding availability out there to the groups that might have these projects. And groups similar to housing families, possibly. So, you know, if anyone out there has an idea or knows of a group that might be in need for funding in those category areas, please let us know. You can contact Daniel, or myself, or any of the other members. So in an effort to help protect the valuable assets which CPC has been funding in the Open Space Recreation categories, we would like to propose tonight that city council prioritize reviewing and updating the city's current Public Shade Tree Ordinance, 1116010, to include a tree board that consists not of the Public Works Commission as it currently does, but a tree board which includes a certified arborist and residents, as many other cities have. Per the guidelines posted by the Mass Tree Wardens and Foresters Association, which is actually linked to on our city's site under Tree Management, a city such as Malden with a population under 75,000 should have a tree warden that is a certified arborist and has a degree in arbor culture, or urban forestry, or the equivalent. We would like to ask city council and the mayor to consider creating an Urban Forestry/Parks Commission to oversee all planting policies for all public spaces, and to apply for other grants to maintain, increase, and improve our green space assets. To be most effective, this Urban Forestry/Parks Commission at minimum should consist of the tree warden, certified arborist, a senior urban forestry landscape planner, and multiple residents with different complementary backgrounds. The creation of an Urban Forestry/Park Commission would then allow the DPW to focus on the very important infrastructure issues that they need to tend to, so that Malden can continue to service residents most efficiently. I know, personally speaking as a resident, and I'm going to take my CPC hat off for just a minute, it's difficult for me to see my CPA money going to fund these open space projects without having a commission or department in place to oversee them. It is beyond time for Malden's living assets, because they're living assets, to be given the priority they deserve. Our own Municipal Vulnerability Report talks about how important the urban forest is to mitigating climate disasters, and properly caring for and preserving our green spaces and urban forests. By creating an Urban Forestry/Parks Commission is one way Malden can become a leader in mitigating damages caused by the climate crisis we're currently living in. Because a climate crisis isn't something that's going to happen in the future. We're living in it right now. I mean, look outside. We've got damaging wind gusts every month for days, there are wildfires for months, record flooding, record drought, record heat waves. We're living in a climate disaster, and too few people are acknowledging it. If municipalities don't start making changes, we're never going to get the global change that needs to happen. So I'm going to put my CPC hat back on and close my presentation. And once again, our CPC page at cityofmalden.org has links to our plan and application docs, and those will answer a lot of other questions. But while I'm here, are there any questions I can answer?
Yeah, I have a bunch of links.
Yeah.
Turn it off, so we can get feedback. Yeah, at least we have a lot of questions. Dan, you are up there. Do you want to say anything, Dan?
Oh, no. I'm here for support.
He's helping you with the slides.
Want to recognize your work.
But he's very, he's very much a supporter.
Yes, yes. So I will go with, in order, Council Linnahan, then Council Siminelli, then Council O'Malley. Everybody's legs going up. Council Linnahan, you have the floor first. Oh, let me turn your mic on, Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much, Lisa and Dan. It's great to see you here always. I know Lisa and I were just kind of out talking with Council Spatafora last week at the Wallace Park, the wall unveiling, which looks great. And I know, we mentioned that some of the historical preservation stuff is sort of hard to source and fund, and I hear you loud and clear on this disparities, that slide that you had up with the pie chart is really, thank you, Dan. You know, that's obviously money that we wouldn't have had for our parks and open space, but I am wondering, how do we get some of the housing, the affordable housing and the historic preservation to boost that up a little bit? And do you, as a committee, do you set goals for what, where we want to be, preferably percentage-wise, or? And I guess I'm asking, how can councillors help?
Right.
Because it does seem like it's a little bit disparate right now. Yeah, lopsided is a good word.
Yeah, I mean, we have not, in the past, we've had other internal issues that we've been ironing out, and organizational, you know, issues that we've been, that I think are on track now. So I'm hoping that we will be able to start setting some goals like that. But internally amongst ourselves, we have been trying to troubleshoot on what groups we possibly could reach out to. So if anybody does know of these, you know, possible groups or potential, you know, charity, nonprofit situations, please let us know, because we're kind of limited in access to those kinds of things. I mean, we know what we know. So everybody in our group is, has a good breadth of experience. So we're kind of relying on, right now, our internal resources to do outreach. So any, you know, anything that councillors may have inside information, let us know, and we'll reach out to the groups. But that is, it is a goal, eventually, to set goals for each category and try to meet them. I think that's an excellent idea.
That's great. I'm glad to hear it. And obviously, anything that we can do to help. I think one of the challenges that I've found with coming up with CPC ideas is, you know it's a lot of work, right, to put on the residents, since we can't ourselves sponsor the project requests, even though we get them from the community and then heavily, heavily embed in the projects once they do get funded. It is sometimes a heavy lift to ask a resident group to take on that pre-app, the application, and then all the community meetings. The only other thing I was going to ask is, to what extent are you aligning some of these projects? Or I hear you that you haven't set goals just yet, but are you using things like our Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, or other groups that already exist, to like, look at what is, you know, they may have on their agenda, and that you can kind of think ahead?
That's kind of been what we've been doing, is reaching out to those groups, yeah. But I have to say, it has not been as wide and net as I would like. And it shows. So the other thing that we do have is Appendix 5, which I think is a good resource for jogging, you know, inspiring people. So I would also, if there is any active resident out there, or a potential group that is looking for a project, I would suggest that they check out that and the database at communitypreservation.org to see what other cities are doing, and see what the potential is. Because those are great resources to see how CPA funds can be used.
That's a great point.
There's a lot of ideas between both of those, the appendix and the database on the Coalition site.
Great, thank you. I'm all set.
Thank you, Council Linnahan.
Council Siminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm kind of, I'm kind of new at this, because I just came back into public office after being away for a while. And, you know, I'm kind of used to like, working on my parks myself, and doing them over, and seeking out funding, you know, working with both the mayor's office and working along with the MRA, which is Strategic Planning, and all those other words that follow along with it. And they've been, and they've been good to work with in the past. So this really is all new to me. So I do have a few questions. So like, when I'm looking over here, and I'm looking at Tartikoff Park and Kirsted Park, and it says $30,000, what is that for? Planning?
So, so the projects are all different. The Kirsted Park, some of them are planning projects, like the Kirsted, Tartikoff. The Felsmeer is also creating a master plan. Patchell Park is, I think that one, that one is in planning as well. The Dever Park is construction.
So my, my question to you is, this money that's up here is for planning these parks, right?
It depends.
Development. Well, all right, so I'll give you an example. When I came into office, Kirsted Park, right, we talked about that. And there was, the money was for the planning of the park, but then it was like, kind of like saying, hey, Chris, you know, now go find the funding. Which, you know, I've been working with the Strategic Planning Office and the mayor's office to do that, and I'm hopeful, and I know that we'll get that done, and whether we got to do it in phases or what have you. So I guess, like, how come you don't go find the funding? Why don't you get the plans going, or just for the plans?
Yeah, so CPC isn't an initiator of the projects. So that's like, I think, a big misconception, too. So we're basically a grant source, so we need the applications to come in, and we would totally consider a construction of a project. And I think that was the plan with Kirsted, was the hope that, the way CPC works is, we ask, we don't, and we found this out through trial and error, is you, we prefer applicants to do the design phase first, and then come back to us with the construction costs and construction plan, based on the plans that were done initially.
So Phase 1 would be the planning, because I'm just trying to understand what the CPC does. Like I said, I've been gone for a while, and when I was here before, you know, if you wanted to do your park over, and you pretty much did it yourself. And it usually was the councillor that led the charge on it, to do it in the neighborhood, where this here, they can't come to you, you got to do it a little differently.
Exactly.
So, you know, I'm just trying to see, you know, my best advantage here, on how to, you know, take advantage of the CPC, CPA category.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, so I'm trying to understand how it works. So Phase 1 would be the, Phase 1 would be the planning, and then once the planning's done, then Phase 2 would be to come back to seek out funding for
For construction.
The planning itself.
Correct, yeah. And we'd be happy to come, you know, visit with you in office hours or whatever, and explain in further detail, but basically that's it. We like to have the plan done first, or the study done first, and then we ask the applicants to come back after that's in place, so that we have a definite path, and the path is known. And then there are also, those plans also help the applicant to get other funding besides CPC. So like park grants, or, you know, there are a multitude of other grants out there that become available once you have the plan for moving forward.
Okay. And I know that, like, I've been working with Alex from Strategic Planning, and he's been, you know, extremely helpful in working. Well, we just recently took a walk through the neighborhood with the mayor, and kind of put things in our own category, that kind of touched base on a lot of the stuff that you're talking about here. So I think this is great, and I think that having this organization is a plus for the city. Because like I said, in the past, old-school style, we kind of like, you know, would, you know, kind of try and create it ourselves. I think we did a pretty good job with Lincoln Commons and a few other places down there and stuff like that. But it is, it is great to have a resource like yours, to be able to, you know, put these ideas together, and then put them through. And it takes a lot of pressure off the city councillors, so they can kind of do some other things, once this stuff, these things are in play.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing I just wanted to talk about was what you were talking about, like the Park Restoration Committee of some sort. And it's funny you say that, because just recently, you know, I had sat down with Marie Louise, Chief of Staff for the mayor's office, along with Chuck Ranigan, and we were talking about these things. And this is something that is kind of dear to me right now, is having like, a park maintenance program. Because what we do is, you know, and other cities do it too, and we get caught up in it. You know, we build these, these $4.3 million parks, on, you know, these parcels, like, again, I'll just take my own neighborhood, like Lincoln Commons, for an example. You know, we build, we'll build these parks, but we have no maintenance program for the future. So, you know, if you go up to the lookout at Lincoln Commons, what you'll see up there is you'll start to see some deterioration. It's not that bad. I think we're going to catch it, and we've talked about this, and we're working on it now. But those are the things that happen, you know, and it's nobody's fault, it's just wear and tear. You know, we have some freezes. I got a freeze at the Lincoln Common that the face is missing. So it's good that you see that the restoration, that we could take a look at that, you know? And so I don't have some friends of mine down there making some molds and doing it themselves. But, you know...
No, that's definitely something that CPC could help with.
Like the period lighting, and things of that, you know, I can go, but these, right now, it's not that bad. But if we continue to let them go and go and go, then all of a sudden, it's way out of cost, when we could have just continued to like, you know, you know, power wash them, and repoint the bricks, and do some other things like that, that we'd get more use out of it. So, you know, I'm all for it, and I think you need somebody that goes around to the parks, like an arborist, like a team, and have a check box. And, you know, benches need to be repaired, you know, these trees are dying, you know, these trees need to be trimmed, some period lighting needs to be, you know, need to be looked at, electrical wise. Those things need, so then you have a comprehensive, I mean, we just did it in my ward when we did the walkthrough, and we did a comprehensive plan of every park, and what it needs, and some of the things that we're having some maintenance with. So I think this is, you know, like I said, I'm new to this, so I think it's a wonderful program.
Well, we're happy to come and talk to you.
Yeah, I'm going to get all your information. I'll get it probably from Alex or something, and we'll sit down, and we'll talk about this, because I'm looking forward to it. So thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
That's great.
Thanks.
All doable with CPA money.
Council O'Malley.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for coming, both of you. We really appreciate it. You know, as you can see, the CPC has a lot of great projects in our community. And one of the ways that you, I think, have been most effective is really kind of being seed funding for projects. You know, there's been a lot of examples of that. And it sounds as though you do need help. You had a request for help in terms of getting more historic preservation, community housing, et cetera. I do think that maybe one of the ways in which you can get maybe more applications from community members, as well as more applications in these other areas, would be to maybe try to change some internal policies at the CPC. Particularly, the, kind of to what Council Siminelli was talking about, and Council Linnahan, the involvement of councillors. Because I think that, de facto, we actually are the applicants often. You know, we might put someone in front of us, but, you know, whether, there's so many examples, you know, obviously the World War I memorial in Ward 2, Council Condon was centrally organizing that. The Linden Rink in Ward 8, Council Seaco was centrally working on that. You know, me with the spot pump, Burke Greenway, you know, these are, the examples go on and on. Council Linnahan and Council Spatafora at Felsmeer Park, Council Linnahan, Patchell Park. You know, I think that, when you're asking for those people who can help get the community to come, you're looking at the group. And it's, and one of the reasons being is because we do know a lot of the challenges that our communities face. We hear a lot about the ideas that people have, and we're really particularly well-situated to help facilitate that. So I think that it would probably be worth taking a look. I don't think that there's a conflict of interest, because, you know, we vote on budgets for everything, and there's really no real conflict of interest there. It might, I know what you're saying, it might look like we might prioritize our project versus our other councillors' project, but as we know, and as Council Seaco can attest, and I can attest the other way, you know, if one of us has a project that we consider like our baby, you know, we support the other councillors to get that through, if it's a good project.
Right.
And that's part of our vetting process, is the council. So I think that that would be really helpful. One other thing is, you had said that the CPC can't initiate projects. I remember meeting with Stuart Sagnor, and him specifically saying that you could. So if you wanted, I would take a, maybe take a check on that, because what he had said was, particularly with the affordable housing component, oftentimes, cities and towns don't get applicants, and it really takes the CPC...
Well, they set up, I think what he was talking about was they set up an Affordable Housing Trust, and then, because some cities then designate their 10% or whatever amount that they designate for affordable housing to that trust to run. So that might have been what he was talking about, but I know, I know that we can't initiate. We can't initiate, we can't act as contractor. All we do, we're grantors, so...
I would look...
So maybe there might have been a miscommunication, but I will.
I would look into it, only because we select you, and we appoint the members of the CPC because of your specific amazing skill sets, and I wouldn't want those to go to waste, when if you, if y'all have good ideas for projects. And so I think it's something to kind of look into, whether or not councillors can actually participate, whether or not members of the CPC. Because I do think that the skill sets that collectively we bring, and being able to connect with the community, is currently going to waste, and I think it could really help achieve those different funding source, projects that you're looking for.
And by not being able to be an applicant, a city councillor not being able to be an applicant, does not mean that they can't be involved, as you mentioned. They are very involved. It's just the fact that they can't be an applicant on the application. So, as I mentioned, we do look for the councillor's support, but we will definitely consider the, you know, within the group, we'll take a look at that.
Because I think it's part of the growth, you know, we set this up, and we, and, you know, even with the membership, you know, we had to tweak that later on, and I think it's something with any organization, and I just think about a few councillors up here, like Council Crowe with Affordable Housing in the YWCA. I think there's just like so many examples of individuals up here that have like a skillset that could really be helpful. And I think that it could be helpful for that.
Yeah, yeah.
One other thing, streamlining your process. I do really enjoy the fact that you are always thinking about iterating, but I do think as someone who is particularly well-informed, the pre-app and the application process is a little bit onerous for a lot of people, and I'm a pretty sophisticated grant writer. So I think about if we really want community members to actually submit these applications, reducing those barriers. Particularly in the application, there's a lot of questions about how does this fit into the existing plans in the city. As someone who goes to as many meetings as I can go to, and reads as many plans as I can read, even for me, it's a challenge to fill out something like that. And so I just think about our residents. I think that that is a barrier that probably could be reduced, particularly because the CPC has that skillset. So you could probably just look at a project and say, you know what, that hits these different marks, and evaluate them based on those, rather than having them on the front end find that out. Urban Forestry Board, I think that's an amazing idea. Obviously, you know, I care a lot of... Obviously, you know, I care a lot about it. And if, I I do know the mayor's office is is working on how to kind of reimagine urban forestry in the city. I see Marie Louise here and I appreciate working with her on that and with the mayor's office. And I do want to highlight that we do have a a a tree warden. Chris Rosa is our is our tree rose, a tree warden. He has a a background, he actually got certified to be a a a tree warden. So we are making progress in the mayor's office.
Is he a certified arborist? Because he just got certified?
He's he's a certified tree warden and he has an extensive history working in trees and landscaping. So he's definitely qualified when it comes to that. But a board of some sort, I mean, I would be willing to discuss that at some point. Thank you so much for this, I know I went over, but it's not often that we get to provide feedback in this type of environment.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes. Hold on one second, Counselor, let's try to man these mics, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try and keep this short. But first of all, I wanted to say thank you. You know, Lisa, we've come, I've come before you and presented some grants on behalf of a a local organization.
Not as a counselor.
What'd you say, not as a counselor, not as a counselor. But I do want to say that it's been getting like even the smoothness that that comes with a couple of years' experience and how it's been done. And your leadership has definitely brought that, so I just wanted to mention that because I we could tell even as our group. So I want to thank you for that. And I think your ideas definitely, or the group's ideas about especially a parks commission with all these new parks coming online is fantastic. And I agree with almost everything here, so I'm not going to, that my fellow counselor said, I'm not going to repeat, but one question I did have is to offer my help, but I saw it looked like there was an open position there and I think it was under housing.
Yeah.
So who, what do you need to fill that criteria?
We need the housing, the chairperson of the Housing Commission to appoint someone because Frank Mullis was our Housing Commission representative and he was a governor's appointee. So there was a new governor's appointee that came in and Frank had to step down and we haven't gotten another appointee from them yet. But I would suggest that it not be another governor's appointee because of the fact that they wouldn't be able to fulfill the the term for CPC apparently. Because I don't know how long the appointee for the governor is in that position, but Frank wasn't able to finish his position because he came off of the board of the housing.
Oh, okay. So off, you know, if you want to let me know, I I would be happy to put the word out if there's any way we can help you fill that position because I know it's a tremendous amount of work that you all do with a tremendous amount of money funneling through. So thank you again for that.
And we've never had a full, we've never had a full committee. This is the closest we've been to being a full committee.
Wow, so it's even more, just thank you anyway for all you're worth that you're doing.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Winslow.
First of all, I want to thank the residents and and property owners of Malden who helped fund this. So people, there's this little surcharge, so this is impossible because the, you know, this was possible because the efforts of many citizens to have this, you know, small surcharge placed on a property bid bill. So let's acknowledge that, that's very important. And I really want to thank all the volunteers who serve on the CPC. And I think it is, it's been a growing thing, things have changed, but I think under your leadership, Lisa, things have, and and with Dan coming on, I think that the ship has steadied and that's very good. I do, I do, you know, it's interesting to hear my fellow counselors talk about the the challenge of not being able to be the applicant as a counselor. You know, I I did work in in Gloucester with their Community Preservation Committee, they did not have that. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, especially, you know, I, you know, some of the work I did was with Ward Six and a couple of projects are smaller projects. And it puts a lot of burden on a, you know, a scout troop or a small bit of residents to do some smaller projects, which have been wonderful at High Rock and we're looking to, you know, some other ones. So I think that that's some of the challenge where as a counselor, I can mentor the people into shaping the project and then sort of take the burden off of the paperwork kind of stuff. So so, I mean, that's just something to think of. And I also think one of the other things for the committee to think about is, you know, longer applications, more complicated things is also makes it harder for people, you know, in environmental justice neighborhoods. People have ideas, it just, it makes it harder. So increasing these barriers is is not another to think of. So that's something just to process in the long run. You know, we're adapting as counselors, you know, we're, we know how to go and 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 go through contortions to get money, that's, we know how to do that. So but just something to think about. And I mean, one of the things you may want to do is evaluate in terms of where the projects are ending up. Are are they being, you know, distributed, are we being equitable in that? And I don't want the process to be a, create inequities. So that's one of the things to think about. Just one of the things to think. But, I mean, all in all, I mean, it's 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 incredible to see the things that are happening and and I think very sensible things of like having, you know, supporting master planning is very good. And I mean, and I think it is an essential part of the application process that if applicants are proposing things for, you know, city land, that the, you know, city be involved, that's very critical. And I appreciate our Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, their engagement and Bob Knox and 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 anybody else. So I think that that is necessary because you you shouldn't be put in the position of trying to approve a project that the city has to figure out who's doing. So so but, but, you know, all in all, I mean, I think it is something as a, with the mayor and the city, you know, working to figure out, you know, it's, it has been a challenge because under the statute, you know, a a Parks Department are really supposed to be serving on the CPC, we don't have that. And so it just shows we don't have that gap. We do as the city do as we can. But it would be good in the long run to have that, you know, that role filled both in the city as well as contributing more to the CPC. And I I will actually, I'm going to see Steve Finn from the Housing Authority, because I think the way our our ordinance is, it's our Housing Authority who who provides that position. And I'll see him tomorrow and see, you know, if there's any possibility of getting someone signed. But that that is a challenge of, I know, I appreciate Eric Henry here, who's on our planning board, who's also the representative, you get double duties. It makes it really hard for people who are on one very active board to have to serve on the second. So but we appreciate all the hard work and I know Cameron Lane was here and other people. So thank you for all the hard work and keep it keep it up. And looking forward to all the exciting projects you're working on and and the responsibility you're taking on to make sure these are all good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counselor Karen McDonald.
Thank you and thank you for this great presentation. Thank you to the CPC members echoing all the things my fellow counselors have said as Chair of the, I got the, excuse me, Environmental and Sustainability Commission. We are working with the with the city on a climate action plan, trying to get that off the ground. So I'd love to talk to you more about that, maybe, you know, come to a CPC meeting and talk more about how we can work together on that.
That'd be great.
I wanted to ask you about your budget for next year. So these are annual grants, right? I mean, do you make them one time? So I see in your report on your site that you have an FY23 estimated funding availability, which has a bunch of things already kind of carved out of the pie. So like, how are you, can you tell me, do you pre, do you commit money across multiple years and how are you doing for next year in terms of your available funds?
Next year, available funds are approximately $1 million. So we, everything that we have awarded is shown here up to and through fiscal year 2022, which is the cycle that we're currently in. So those are all the projects that are waiting to receive their funding right now are on this expenditures slide, which we can send around to all the counselors after the meeting. But so so the approximate $1 million for fiscal year 2023 is open for.
Right, so I'm looking at this pie chart that's on your website and on the report and it has like debt service, $200,000, community housing, $278,000.
That's basically a breakdown of our, of that, this simple pie chart. So it, the total, the pie chart that you're referring to on our website includes our administrative services. This is just for projects. So the pie chart that you're looking at is more broken into the different projects that we that we've done in the past. We just tried to keep it simple for this.
Oh, so it's just a sort of like, our guess is if we follow the same breakdown, we'll end up spending this much on community preservation, this much, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
You want to say, Counsel?
Yeah.
Thank you.
For the estimated?
For for the F for the FY23 budget, we do by law encumber, we reserve 10% for each of the three categories. So that's, so that that explains some of those pie slices.
That you're looking at on the website.
You were looking at, for FY23 is 10% for open space, community housing, historic preservation. The debt service, the $200,000 that we encumber for the next 10 years is for the Roosevelt Park revitalization.
Which is included in.
Which is included here. So assuming that goes out, the bond is issued, then we will pay 200 of that $1 million. Will go to that debt debt service.
So so that is a more detailed pie chart of the the spaces that you're looking at here.
Can I just ask one follow up question? So how much, like how many projects don't get awarded? I mean, you know, how much pressure is there on on this use of funds?
Well, our historic expenditures, we've been able to fund everything that has come to us. So so far, everything that was eligible has been funded. We have not, there has, there has only been, there's only been, I think, one project since you've been on that the committee did not feel was a good value for the city, so we did not recommend it. But we had the funds available to recommend it, we just decided not to recommend it to City Council and the mayor.
Thank you. Well, lots of exciting ideas here, so we'll see if we can make it more competitive.
Excellent, love it.
Thank you. Dan, I told you to be speaking. Counsel Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just really wanted to say thank you so much, Lisa. When I brought this idea to serve on this committee, I don't think you really realized what you were getting into, but really taking the lead and kind of smoothing out some of the processes and really being such a attention to detail has, I think, made it such a smooth process, although some people feel onerous. I've had a few projects I wanted to get going to and it is kind of difficult to find people that want to hop on and do it. I don't know if I could take on one more project myself, but but I'm still working on it. So I just really wanted to say thank you so much to the, everybody on that committee that really does put blood, sweat and tears into each one of these these applications, this process, and it really does make it, and I think the community sees the benefit of all that you're doing. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, I I have to give our committee definitely kudos because we have a great group of people and and it's been, it's been a pleasure working with all of them. They're really very thoughtful and and very dedicated and passionate about CPA and CPC.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Counselor Seaco.
Thank you, Council President. I I just wanted to give you a little bit of a brief update. I texted Mr. Rosa while Counsel O'Malley was talking about the arborist and he is cert, he is a newly certified tree warden.
Warden, right, that's what I thought.
He went to college for horticulture and arboriculture. And he's in the process of taking the test to be a certified arborist.
Excellent, thank you for clarifying that.
I I thought I heard that, so I just wanted to clarify that we will have a certified arborist really soon, hopefully, as long as Mr. Rosa passes his test. So thank you for all your hard work. It's amazing to see everything coming together.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all and and the committee for for all your hard work. As everyone said, I won't cover, I won't go over everything everyone else said, but just two things. Number one, what were the office hours?
Oh, 12 to 4 at Wednesdays for Daniel.
Wednesdays, okay.
Yeah, on the third floor. He's got a space that may be moving now.
Yeah, maybe moving down the hall, but I'm on the third floor. I'm available Wednesdays.
I'm sorry, Wednesdays.
Wednesdays, okay, because we have a group of people in Ward Five who are working on a project and that we need to bring it to you, but it's very unique in the fact that it will actually, we'll be working with a sister city. So we need to see how that might work.
We have yet to do one of those, so it would be, yeah.
Yes, so we we definitely are trying to get get all our facts together, so, but the sister city is interested also. So we'll be very interested to see how this would work in that situation. And I do, just the one thing that we haven't said much of is the decision of the city to take 1% and add it to the real estate taxes was one of, I think, the best decisions that the city has made, to have this money outside of the general budget and be able to use it for so many things that need to be done to preserve our city, whether it's the the documents at the library, whether it's the wall over at BB, parks, et cetera. It really, you know, is just a fabulous, we need a big thank you to all the folks who orchestrated the movement to get this passed in the city because it's leaving a legacy of us.
They were hardworking folks, I was part of that group and and they definitely worked hard to get it on the ballot.
Yeah, it definitely is.
Kudos to the city for voting for it.
Yeah, no, it really is. So, you know, kudos to them for having the vision to stop this. So thank you and thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll be in touch.
Bring it on, we're waiting.
All right, seeing no more lights, I guess in the last one, I I will be very brief. I know it's been on already for a lot of participants. Just want to say thank you. You know, I think the council, especially the council, has been here for a while. When it started, certainly, it was, we, nobody ever did it, right? So it was a learning curve and both for for the council, for the community, and certainly for the committee. And every year, it's gotten progressively better. And I think what's, we're starting to see now is some of those designs that you sponsored are now going into actual development. And some of those smaller projects, mostly historical society, historic value or significance are either have been completed or in the process of being completed. So I, you know, when you're talking about this thing and 1% and matching funds, it's great, but I think when you actually drive by and see, you know, a wall repaired or a building fixed or a playground updated, that's when, that's when you really see the value of this, not only the money, but I think the community and the committee. So we can always improve in everything, but I just want to say thank you for your hard work and and the meetings have gotten so much better, so much more efficient, so much more transparent. And I I look forward, you know, a couple more years seeing this committee do great work. So thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
That's it.
That's it.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you all for your time. No, I appreciate each one of you and we appreciate the chance to talk about the process and get the CPA information out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa, thank you, Dan. All right, next, start our business.
The guest and citizen achieving announcement, the mayor's office and the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development will appear before the council to introduce the city's new Office of Housing Stability that is operated by Housing Families, Inc. This office helps residents find and keep housing by providing services, assistance and information to Malden renters, homeowners and landlords.
Counsel O'Malley, you sponsored this, so I turned your mic.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you, this was brought forward and funded through the ARP funds and which I serve on that committee along with Counsel Simonelli and Marie Louise from the mayor's office. And, you know, we're, this is our, and and Zaida Ortiz, who is our resident member. And, you know, we we were able to kind of bring this forward and we're just really proud of of the work to help make sure that Malden's housing is is stable. And I'll hand it over to my my colleague from Ward Seven.
Sorry, Chris, hold on one second, I'm sorry. I was looking for Ward Seven that way, I don't know why, Ward Seven.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, my colleague, Ryan, Counsel Ryan O'Malley, and Marie Louise, who sits on the committee, and Alex for all the work you do. And, you know, it's it's a fitting thing, and I'll be real quick, just a little quick synopsis, you know, it's it's a real fitting thing because about, you know, geez, I want to go back about 20 years ago, if I'm not mistaken. I remember I was approached by Ed Lucy, the old bear, Ed Lucy, who owned that parcel and that development, had his insurance office in there along with the director of the Malden Housing Authority, Jack Daly, and the Housing Families. I don't even know if that was the actual name at that, I think it might have been the other way around or something. But anyway, with Housing, was it Housing Families and they switched it or something? But, yeah, Tri, oh, thank you, Tri Cities. And I remember, you know, they wanted to move there and, you know, and it was a very difficult thing and I know I've told some of the folks, but since we're on TV, I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of the history of it. but since we're on TV, I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of the history of it. And, you know, it was a, it was a controversial thing because, you know, that neighborhood, you know, has a lot of low, moderate income housing already. And we had just been built Lincoln Commons across the street. So a lot of the neighbors, you know, didn't know what they were going to get, you know, because I think it was like 20 or 21 units were actually put in there along with the headquarters and stuff. So, and it worked out great. Let me just speed it up. It worked out great. Great neighbor, very helpful to the neighborhood. You know, I'm glad I was part of the process. I remember Ian Slattery, who was a very dedicated worker back then. I think they gave out the Ian Slattery Awards there. I think I got one of the first ones that they gave out. And it's just fitting to be coming back into office and be able to work with Housing Families again and be part of a process that, you know, gave, you know, gave some significant amount of money to help out some Malden folks. So it's very honorable for me to be sitting here today and seeing this happen. So I just want to say thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Simonelli. And thank you for being brief. When you started back 20 years ago, I was concerned we'd be here for a while. Now, I have Alex. Laura Jaws, if you just want to, you know, the record, state your name and address for the record and begin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Alex Pratt, Community Development Director for the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, OSPCD for short. And I'm here tonight with Heather Van Ormen, the Director of our Office of Housing Stability from Housing Families, and I'll talk all about that.
Alex, I know you're not shy. Can you speak, is anybody else having, can you speak a little closer? Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So just briefly, the Office of Housing Stability is a one stop shop for residents who are facing a housing crisis. Since we, since the pandemic began, the mayor and the city has really increased our funding and our programs to address housing stability. This is kind of the, the most we have done to date, and I think it's really the best practice that we are seeing across cities, across, not just the state, but across the country as well, to establish our local Office of Housing Stability. Because we know that it's not as simple as someone's behind on rent, they need rental assistance. Someone's behind on their mortgage, they need mortgage assistance. Housing is complicated. Housing is someone's whole life. And so what we're, what we're doing here is really having a team that is dedicated, that has the funds to do those cases, but also the more complicated cases that we're seeing more and more of. So we're really excited to be here tonight to talk about that. So the Office of Housing Stability helps residents keep and find their housing. And it's not just for renters, it's for tenants, it's for landlords, it's for homeowners. It's for landlords who live in Malden, it's for landlords who don't live in Malden and are having trouble with their tenants. Our goal is to stabilize the community, and that involves everyone in the housing picture. So that's really what we're doing here. The Office of Housing Stability is if, if you have a tenant who's having a housing crisis and you don't know where to send them, this is where you send them. This is the place to go. And they'll take referrals from counselors, from city agencies, from state agencies, from nonprofit agencies, as well as neighbors. I know they get a lot of calls from all sorts of people all over the, all over the city. The office was established using ARPA funds, and those funds were through the ARPA Subcommittee on Household Support. Counselor Simonelli, Counselor O'Malley were a part of that committee and reviewed the proposal before we put it out to bid and reviewed the bid that Housing Families presented. Also on that committee is the very esteemed Maria Louise from the mayor's office and Zada Ortiz, who's our resident member. And so it was really wonderful from the OSPCD perspective, you know, from the staff side of things, working very closely with the mayor's office and working with the committee to put this proposal forward. So to talk more about the office and really to introduce the team, I want to bring Heather Van Ormen up to walk you through exactly what it is that they do.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Heather Van Ormen, and I just want to go over briefly what the office does, who we are, and how you can reach us. So first of all, we offer legal assistance, which could be advice, representation, trying to address any housing related legal needs that people come to us with. We also offer rental and mortgage assistance, and that can be internal funds that we administer or also there's state funds that we help people apply to and access. In addition, we do case management and housing search. This is a big one. A lot of people have trouble finding affordable housing. It's in short supply. So we are going to hire someone to help with that process and help people apply for affordable housing as well. We also coordinate the weekly Malden Housing Task Force. So this is a group of local providers in Malden, like ABCD, Elliott Human Services, Cambridge Health Alliance and Housing Families. So we run this meeting every week to deal with emergency cases and to make sure we're all working effectively together and we're not duplicating efforts. We also promote home ownership. We refer people to first time home buyer classes and consumer credit counseling. And we're going to maintain a list of affordable housing opportunities, listserv, so people can sign up for that. So whenever there's an opportunity, we'll email everyone and they can apply if they want to. We also screen everyone we talk to for code violations and we confer them back to the appropriate department in the city or for a rehab program if that's appropriate as well. And we offer mediation as well. We have a partnership with Justice Start, which is a nonprofit in Cambridge, but they've worked in Malden District Court for years now. And they will continue to mediate cases in court, but also before court. If there's an issue with a landlord tenant they want to work it out or between tenants, we can refer them to get that set up before it kind of escalates. Another thing we're focused on is community education and outreach. So we want to set up outreach spots in the city where we go in, you know, weekly or monthly, whichever is works, where we go and have open office hours for people to drop in if they have any housing concerns. So possible spots we've been thinking of are City Hall, the library, the senior center, and the new community center in Ward 7. When that opens, we think that would be a great spot, too. And we're open to any suggestions if people have other spots they think would be good. We already do a lawyer for the day program, so we do that in Malden District Court and in the Blueburn Session of Northeast Housing Court that covers Malden. So this is for Malden residents who need help on the day of court. It helps us sometimes work with the most vulnerable people who don't even know that they can reach out. So we can kind of capture them at that point and try and resolve their housing crisis. We're also going to do trainings in the community. We're hoping to do them for tenants, landlords, service providers, just general community members that are interested in housing issues. So we're also going to do things on like tenants' rights, rental assistance, how to access it, and kind of whatever the community needs, we want to be able to address that with some education. And we take referrals from all over the community, neighbors helping neighbors groups, government officials, service providers, schools, neighbors refer their friends, everything like that. So we're grateful for those referrals and we should definitely keep them coming. So this is our staff so far. So I'll be directing the program, and I've been working in Malden for eight years. We have two new staff attorneys coming on. They're going to be starting on July 11th, and they both happen to live in Malden and are very excited to be working in the community that they live in. We think it's going to be a great fit. They have some great experience. We also have a paralegal, Christina Singh, who's been with Housing Families for over a year, and she speaks Mandarin, which has been a great asset, too. We have one position still open for a case manager to do housing search. So that's on our website. If anyone knows anyone interested, we're eager to hire that. And we also have support from our Housing Families leadership, our CEO, Laura Rosie, and our Director of the Homelessness Prevention and Legal Services Program, which is Jana Stafford. She's also worked in Malden for 16 years. So this is just how to reach us. You can reach us at Housing Families, but we also have a City Hall extension, which is 5721. So you can just transfer calls to us, and that's a voicemail box that we check throughout the day. We also have an email, which is housingstability@cityofmalden.org. Our offices are located at 919 Eastern Ave. So people can call and make appointments to come meet with us in person. And soon we'll be in the community with dropping hours for people to come. We'll reach out to you when those details are worked out. I think Alex has a little bit more he's going to share.
Yeah, Heather, you might not want to go anywhere, though, so stay close because there's a bunch of questions, all right?
Now, how do we pay for all that? So I mentioned that the ARPA Subcommittee on Household Support reviewed this proposal before we put the RFP out to bid and also reviewed Housing Families' response to that, RFP. I just want to name again Counselor Simonelli, Counselor O'Malley, Maria Louise and Zada Ortiz for their support and belief in this program and in this provider. So that was funded in the first year with $550,000. That covers the three attorneys, the case manager and the paralegal, as well as a lot of direct assistance that can be used for Malden residents that's a little more flexible. They also will be drawing on other sources of funding that they have from other grants through the city, through the feds, through the state, as well as other foundations and other state and federal programs.
You also asked, Alex?
That's me. That's all.
So there is four, five councils right now pending, just to give everybody an idea from timelines. Six, I'm sure we all have a question. Seven. So the first one is Counsel Linahan. Counsel Linahan.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to you both.
Oh, I hit that. Sorry. Go ahead.
I don't have a question. I have a very brief comment and a suggestion. I wanted to share that, as I think you both know, I've already used the services. I had a fairly complex housing situation come across my plate. And when I think back to early in the pandemic, if something like that had been a call that I got, the number of people I would have had to call, probably both of you, Jana, you know, others maybe. It was amazing to be able to just send an email and know that a touch point was made with the resident within a couple of hours and that, you know, that case is working towards getting resolved. That is such a high value to us. And lest anyone think that these issues don't come up in Ward 3, you'd be sadly mistaken. It's probably, one of the top issues is requests for housing help, which brings me to my suggestion, which is to connect with the schools somehow. Probably 90% of my housing calls come through people that I know more through the BB community than even realize I'm their council representative. So that is definitely where a lot of these issues, there's such a complex mixture of different caregiving situations. And I think you'd reach a lot of people in need if you did some networking with the schools. And if I can help to do that, I'd be happy to do so. So thank you for what you're doing.
That's a great idea. We'll definitely do that. And yesterday, after the ribbon cutting for the new Malden Teen Health Center, we were talking to the CHA folks who'll be operating that center. So they're aware that the Office of Housing Stability is up and running.
Thank you, Counsel Linahan. Counselor Crowe.
Oh, that was quick. I didn't realize that was so soon. I just wanted to say thank you.
Do you want to, I can take you out of order. What's the other go first?
I'm sorry, for all that you're doing, you really hit the ground running, actually. I don't know when the, exactly the date that this office kind of opened. I don't remember when we got the email, but on that Thursday, I was driving and I got a call and someone didn't, asked me like, where do I call? And like Counsel Linahan said, I would probably have started in my, like, I don't know, probably called Maria Louise first or Alex. You know, who do I call now? So it really was, I just actually gave them the phone number. It was a Thursday of the long weekend. So I said, they're not going to be open until, you know, till Tuesday. And that Tuesday afternoon, I got a text going, that office is amazing and that, Heather, you are amazing. So, I mean, that just speaks volumes because I was like, oh boy, where do I start with this one? So I just really appreciate all that and really have that one stop shop. And I do have a project for you, so I will be calling. But so thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Counselor. The next one is Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I also just want to say thank you. I've worked with Heather and Housing Families, and of course you, Alex, do for many years. In my prior role here, too, we were very connected. And so I'm really glad that there's now one place that people can go to. I think one of the questions I had, you mentioned case management and to apply for applications. So this is extremely important. I remember when I was doing this for years, one of the hardest things, barriers for people were filling out that application. So one of the questions I had, would you be able to help residents who are applying also for Malden Housing Authority applic, oh, excellent, okay. Because that was like one of the biggest things. That application is huge. Yes, it's a nightmare, exactly. And then also, do you have people in your office, I'm assuming, that speak different languages that could help them fill this out?
Yes.
Translation.
It happens to the whole Housing Families network. So even if it's not in our department, if one of the case managers on the shelter team speaks the language, we'll use that. And if not, we're going to work on getting a language line as well, just as backup.
Excellent. And then last, I'm just concerned because I know how needed this is. When ARPA funds, this might be for you, when ARPA fund ends, how will this be sustainable in the long term?
So that's something that we are well aware of and that we are working on. And Housing Families has a built out development team that's done a lot of great work as well. So we are already having that conversation. Now, I note, we noted here that this is the funds for the first year. We're going to see this first year how that budget adjusts, which way it goes. Maybe we find we need one fewer lawyer and one more case manager. We don't know yet. This is a new program for us, so that number could change somewhat. And then as we get closer to that ARPA cutoff date, we're going to be looking more and more at what these other funds could be. You heard about one potential fund earlier this evening? We haven't talked about that. We haven't talked about it with them. We're probably years off from the making. But there are a lot of sources out there that could fund something like this.
Okay, thank you. And thank you so much. This work is just so complicated and so needed. So thank you for sticking in there and helping people.
Thank you, Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes. Heather, nothing I want to disrupt you, but if you've got any answer, can you just use the mic? Not for the benefit of us, just for the people at home, because I think you helped with the applications was probably pretty poignant to a lot of people at home, and they might not be able to hear, that's why. That's it. Counsel Karen Donald.
Yeah, thank you. This is just thrilling. It seems like such an amazing program. I'm really excited to see where it goes. I love the partnership model, so great. Congratulations. My question, so I'm married to a social worker who's a case manager. And, you know, this question about case management and finding housing, I'm going to ask you a question. I think I know the answer to, but how are you doing or how do you expect to be able to do in actually getting people into more permanent housing? I mean, beyond the transitional types of housing that Housing Families has a direct hand in, how are we doing and, and, you know, do we, I'm assuming we all understand we probably need to do more to address that. So just wanted to ask about that.
Yeah, it's not going to be easy. One idea we're working with is we have a pretty extensive database of landlords in the area from doing rental assistance over the past few years. We've done a ton of rental assistance. So we want to reach out to those landlords and see them. They want us to see this as a partner in this office. So if they do get open units, they will think of us, you know, first, where we can get people into the units quickly because we'll have, you know, a long list of people who need housing. We're hoping to build, you know, continue building relationships with landlord, bigger landlords or smaller landlords that have openings. We do get some from Housing Families. We place a lot of people through our shelter program. So sometimes landlords will just come to us when they have an opening because they know us. We want to expand on that to be able to really use the networks we can find because it's very hard to find housing right now. Thank you.
What's that, Counsel? Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Simonelli. You're not going to start 20 years.
No, no, not 20 years. We're just going to go back a couple of days for you. How's that, Mr. President? Sound all right? I get two days from you? All right. Thank you. I just want to say that, you know, to echo some of my colleagues, I have sent a few people in your direction so far. And it's funny because I just got another one right now, so I'm actually texting them your information right now. Is that all right, Mr. President? Can I do that? So, you know.
You're a superhero, Counsel. You're just a superhero.
You know, listen, you all wanted me back. You got me. That's what you get. So anyway, I was saying that, you know, and again, you know, the entire city I know is in desperate need of housing, the whole United States for that matter, really, you know. But, you know, I got to just kind of worry about my neck of the woods, which is a tough, tough spot down there, especially post-COVID, you know, and people looking for housing and housing being so expensive and, you know, it's just ridiculous. I mean, I'm the ward counselor and I'm living in the storefront, right? So it's kind of a tough situation down there. But it's good to have this resource and we're using it as we speak, as you can see right now. And I'm sending it out. So, you know, we're really lucky to have you and the city of Malden have a resource to be able to send you. You guys have done great work, Alex, Marie Louise. I mean, I know that you guys have these meetings when Counsel Ryan and I, you know, aren't around and, you know, behind closed doors doing your regular daily work. So, you know, we really appreciate that up here, and I know the citizens do as well. So thanks for all your help. Appreciate it.
Good, Mr. President. That was good. I just would just put a footnote. The storefront has been converted legally in zoning to residential, you know, actually living in a storefront.
It's a bodega.
Yes.
I still have people coming by for slurpees.
Counsel Winslow.
No, just thank you, Alex and Heather, for all the work you've done. It's been an incredibly hard few years, and even, you know, leading up to this, we knew it was getting harder. So to know that we have this resource in place for now and that we are working to. So to know that we have this resource in place for now and that we are working to make sure this is a resource for long term. I know, sitting on the Affordable Housing Trust, we know there's, it's a heavy, you know, and hard challenge to address the longer term issues. But we're there to work together on all this. So fantastic. And looking forward to working with you all in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. I don't see any of the lights. I will be very brief. Thank you for the great presentation. A lot of great work. Very robust, I would say. Actually learned a few things of what the organization's doing. I like the proact, being proactive, actually looking for housing, affordable housing stock. So you have an inventory. Easier said than done. And then the idea you can just transfer them from the city phone system right to yours, using technology, very efficient. So great work. Continue the great work. And hopefully, you know, we'll come back for an update and we'll see a lot of accomplishments. So I appreciate the update. Seeing no other questions. Have a great day.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. Clerk is just checking to see if we have any public comment. I don't think we had any. We're just going to confirm it. Is there any? Oh, get his pen back, though. So there's no public comment. I will go to the next order of business, which is the approval of the minutes for the minutes of May 24, 2022, in paper 268-22. Counselor Winslow, is that your mic on or have you shut it off?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 24, 2022? There's no public comment. On Counsel Winslow's motion to approve the minutes of May 24, 2022, all those in favor? All those opposed? Next order of business.
Paper 269-22, minutes of the meeting of May 31, 2022.
On Counselor Winslow's motion again. Okay, on Counsel Winslow's motion again, seconded by Counsel Carney for the minutes of meeting of May 31, 2022. All those in favor? All those opposed? Next order of business.
Paper 270-22, Council Reappointment, Molly Pidgen of 371 Pearl Street, Malden, is a member of the Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Committee. Said term to expire May 1, 2024.
Counselor Semenelli for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I would like, if there's no objections, I'd like to just pass this on the floor so we don't clog up the Personnel Appointments Committee. I mean, unless anybody wants any particular reason why they want to see this person.
Questions, comments, let me see. For the mics, Counsel McDonald.
This particular person is a member of the commission that I chair. And so I can speak to their efforts. But I haven't talked to them about their reappointment yet. So to be consistent, I'm happy to recommend to the committee. I just want to hear, you know, I'm happy to be consistent. But I'm also, you know, I personally am comfortable approving this person on the floor because I know them. But it might be better processed to refer to committee. So I defer to the will of the council.
Okay. May you counsel, Counsel Murphy.
I know Ms. Pidgen has been on the committee for quite a while. And I am perfectly happy of appointing her on the floor this evening, following your lead. If you want to make that motion, I'll second it. Is that what you wanted to do?
It's my motion. It's my motion, Mr. President.
Oh, your motion, okay.
Mr. President.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm hearing some debate. Counsel Semenelli? Are you all set, Counsel Murphy?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, Counsel Semenelli. The mics, who has--
Thank you. Listen, once again, I mean, if you want to refer it to the committee, you know, I'm open to doing that. I just think that, you know, if you know her and if there's no particular reason, you know, why you want to interview her in the subcommittee and we can push this thing forward, it would be more appreciative. But if you have a, you know, a reason, a strong reason that you want to have it come before the subcommittee meeting, you know, your wish is my command, Counsel. But I'd like to try and continue to move these things on the floor if you're okay with it. I know you're the chairman of this committee. So I'll divert it to you, Mr. President.
I need a motion. Counsel McDonald, mic's on.
So I'm happy to make that motion unless you've already made it, Counsel Semenelli.
No, I held it for you.
All right. So I'm happy to make the motion that we make this reappointment. I will follow up with Molly personally, make sure I ask her those questions that we tend to ask in committee.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, on Counselor McDonald's motion to approve, to, excuse me, reappoint Molly Pidgen of 371 Pearl Street, member of the Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Committee. Said term to expire May 1, 2024, seconded by--
I think Counsel Murphy--
Oh, Counsel Murphy did that. Sorry, Counsel. Seconded by Counsel Murphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Molly Pidgen has been reappointed to the Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Committee. Next order of business.
Paper 271-22, Mayoral Appointment, Robert Edward Collins of 12 Wadsworth Street, Malden, is a constable to serve process in the city of Malden, effective May 25, 2022. Said term to expire May 25, 2025. Confirmation is not required.
Motion to put on file.
Oh, and Counsel Semenelli's motion to place on file. All those, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Next order of business.
Paper 272-22, Mayoral Reappointment, Joan Chason of 274 Summer Street, as a member of the Malden Housing Authority Board. Said term to expire May 1, 2027. Council confirmation is needed.
On Counsel Semenelli's, I lost my spot there, excuse me. On Counsel Semenelli's motion to refer, you want to refer this, Counsel?
No, again, once again, I would like to point this on the floor tonight. I think I would hope that everybody knows, former Counselor Joan Chason, I have served with her in the past on the council. And, you know, once again, you know, this is some people that we know. I mean, unless, again, let me be clear, being fair, unless somebody has an issue and they wanted to go to subcommittee meeting and not talk about it on the floor, I'm okay with that. But if there isn't any, I'd like to move the paper.
Okay, we got a couple of seconds here. So I have Counsel Carney and Counsel Seager have both seconded. Okay, on Counsel Semenelli's motion to reappoint Joan Chason, seconded by Counsel Carney and Counsel Seager. All those in favor? Say aye. All those opposed? I see no noes. Pass is eleven, nothing. Next order of business.
Paper 273-22, Mayoral Reappointment, Stacy Van Devere of 6 Lebanon Terrace, as a member of the Commission of Energy Efficiency and Sustainability. Said term to expire May 4, 2024. Confirmation not required.
Motion to place on file, Mr. President?
On Counsel Semenelli's motion to place on file, all those, all those in favor? All those opposed? Next order of business.
Paper 274-22, Mayoral Reappointment, Joshua Ward Smith of 44 Greystone Road, as a member of the Commission on Energy Efficiency and Sustainability. Said term to expire on May 4, 2024. Confirmation is not required.
On Counsel Semenelli's motion to place on file, all those in favor? All those opposed? Next order of business. Motion is placed on file. Next order of business.
Paper 275-22, Mayoral Reappointment, Ossie Schwab of 55 Graner Street, Malden, as a member of the Cultural Council. Said term to expire on July 30, 2025. Confirmation not required.
On Counsel Semenelli's motion to place on file, all those in favor? All those opposed? Items, all those opposed? Seeing none, hearing none. Motion carries eleven, nothing. Items placed on file. Next order of business.
Paper 276-22, Mayoral Appointment, Stephanie Stone of 19 Pine Street, Malden, as an associate member of the Planning Board. Said term to commence upon confirmation by the City Council and expire March 1, 2024, to complete the unexpired term of Charles Ferguson.
Refer to committee, Mr. President.
On Counsel Committee's motion, receive the committee report. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to do two things. On Counsel Semenelli's motion to refer to committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? I didn't refer it to committee. Thank you, Counsel. Crowe for yelling at me publicly. Appreciate it. Next order of business.
Paper 277-22, Mayoral Appointment, Vikas Verma of 85 Harvard Street, Malden, as an associate member of the Planning Board. Said term to commence upon confirmation by the City Council and expire March 1, 2025, to complete the unexpired term of Risa Gray, who moved to full member status.
Motion to refer to committee, Mr. President.
On Counsel Semenelli's motion to refer to committee, seconded by Counsel Murphy. All those in favor? All those opposed? Items referred to committee. Next order of business. Are we on referrals?
Done.
Okay, I am going to make an executive decision here. We have some guests in the audience that have served the city of Malden for many years. And I would like to make sure they serve their retirement age in a happy place. So I'm going to jump down to the Finance Committee. If the Finance--
Want to make that motion?
If, yeah. Barbara, you all set if I do that? Just for that one paper? Okay, so on Counselor Seager, make the motion.
Take, which paper are we taking? 292-22, 237-22?
Yes.
Out of order?
On Counsel Seager's motion to take Paper 292-22 and 237-22 out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, out of order. Now we're going to go to on, you want to read that, Clerk? Sorry.
Committee report, Paper 292-22, Committee Report, the Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Paper 237-22. Having considered the same, make the following report on the suggested increase in the COLA base from $16,000 to $18,000 for contributing retirees and survivors of the Malden retirement system.
Counsel Murphy for the committee report. On Counsel Murphy's motion, receive the committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel Murphy for the committee report. Let me put the mic on for you. There you go, Counsel.
There we go. Thank you very much. The Finance Committee met earlier today. We met with the Retirement Board. A number of the members are sitting here with us today to speak to the issue of increasing the COLA base for retirees. What that means for those folks living at home is that when a COLA raises granted, and let's say, for example, it's three percent, it's only applied to a predetermined amount of the actual pension. So for example, if a retiree has a pension of $20,000 a year, the three percent today would only be applied to $14,000, a $14,000 base. So they don't get three percent of the full amount. The request came to us from the Retirement Board to increase that COLA base, as it's called, from fourteen, I'm sorry, from $16,000 to $18,000, which is the max that it can be. The, after much discussion today, talking about our unfunded liability and also other, you know, budgetary concerns, it was the Finance Committee, along with the Long Term Planning Committee, voted the increase out favorably. So it is now before, it was not a unanimous vote, but it did get voted out favorably to the full City Council. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have on the floor. But I would make a motion that we pass the--
We do have a light on. Hold on, we have a light. Counsel Seager already wanted to second it. There's two papers we can share there. Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to briefly say, and I had spoken to the gentleman already, that I am definitely going to vote favorably here. I was a little confused at the vote in the committee. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. Thank you.
This is a nominal amount for our retirees to receive. And once again, it's predicated on a COLA amount, which is the cost of living increase being approved each year by the Retirement Board. So if there is no COLA increase approved by the Retirement Board, which two years ago, they did not approve it based on what was happening, you know, within the world, there would be no increase in the pensions. But for every percentage, up to three percent that they approve, it would be applied against this new $18,000 base.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. I do want to say, so I voted against this in committee. I would have supported a smaller increase and wanted the chance to vote on that, which, because this passed, we did not then have the chance to do. We, you know, then went on to hear from the School Department, who has lots of budget concerns of their own. And so the strong performance of our retirement portfolio is what's enabled the Retirement Board to put this suggestion forward because it's still, you know, still way under what we would have budgeted under our previous actuarial evaluation. So I appreciate that. But the truth is also that inflation doesn't, inflation is terrible for those on fixed income. And so even this modest increase doesn't, doesn't cover those full costs. So I will be supporting it on the floor. And part of the reason that I'll be doing that is because our CFO, Chuck Ranigan, in the meeting, as well as the members of the Retirement Board, did say that if the, if the market doesn't do well, as some economists are predicting in the next year, they're open to working with us to restructure the payment schedule. We are ahead of many municipalities that are our peers in terms of how well-funded our pension system or our, you know, our retirement system is. And so I just want the record to reflect that we have that commitment in working with our peer leaders. If those economic pressures do make it harder for us to make the budget ends meet, the pressure is less in the next fiscal year than in the out years, you know, three, four, five years down the road. And it creates about another $6 million in liability that we will have to ultimately pay. So I just wanted to make sure that the record reflects that we have the commitment and partnership to work to address those issues should that arise. Thank you.
And part of those, part of the issue, not the issue, is part of the potential resolution should anything change financially, is that we do have the ability to extend out for another 10 years the full funding required of the liability. So we're hoping, as Counsel McDonald said, we are funded at almost 81%, I believe, of the outstanding liability, which is much higher than many, many cities. And we're very aggressive about trying to get to 100%. But should the need arise, we do have wiggle room to be able to request that the funding mechanism be moved from 2030 all the way up to 2040. So we're in good shape. And it's a wonderful thing to be able to do for our retirees who are, as Counsel McDonald just said, living on a fixed income. So.
Okay, before we take the vote, Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the Chair of Finance for docketing this in finance and having it come out on the floor. So we had enough time to really digest it and debate it. So I do appreciate that. As Counselor Murphy did say, you know, the increasing of the COLA base will have a very nominal impact on individual retirees. Over the year, it would only be--
That was me, Counsel. I hit the spacebar. It apparently pauses everything. Counsel O'Malley, there you go.
Over, over the year, it would actually only be a $60 increase. So it is very nominal. The concern that I have, and I will be supporting it tonight, but I just want to make sure that I'm transparent. And this is debate, and it's good for, for the overall dialogue. The concern that I do have is that when you aggregate that $60 over the entirety of all retirees and also the liability of current workers who will eventually retire, the liability is $5 million. And while we are doing well historically, this year has been really precarious when it comes to the finance, financial markets. We have been told by our advisor or consultant that the fund, the pension fund will be losing money this year. And we don't know if it's going to be losing money over the next couple of years. So I personally think it is a challenging fiscal decision to increase costs when you are currently losing money in the fund. But I do believe that the Retirement Board will be able to handle that. So I will be voting in favor of this. We're putting a lot of confidence on your board, and we look forward to seeing this succeed and us being fully funded by 2029, 2030. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody else, I will speak very briefly on this. I support this. This is, this is obviously a debate at a much larger issue. It is looking at our current liabilities and then looking at our future liabilities. And it's never, you know, it's not too often you have the stock market working with you to increase that and not taking anything out of your unfunded liabilities to cover that. But in the world where inflation rates are eight percent, some say as high as 12, you certainly do not want to let your retirees decide between buying a gallon of gas or a gallon of milk because of the loss in buying power. One thing I would say is, from a moderation standpoint, I believe the Social Security has announced a 5.9% increase. It's the largest increase for the Social Security since 1982 because of inflation. So if the United States government is saying 5.9 and we're doing three, that's pretty good. And I would just also remind, I think the people in the audience, too, is a lot of the retirees, I can't say all of them, do not collect Social Security benefits. They rely solely on their pensions because they do not pay into Social Security. And the few that may have worked-- And the few that may have worked and had enough quarters, they receive that number as well. But a lot of them, quite frankly, rely on that, on the city's retirement program. So, you know, it is certainly a debate we have to have for many generations. Social Security's doing it now, but when I saw the 3 and then the 5.9 for Social Security, it was pretty easy vote for me, so I will support this very easily. Thank you. So on Counselor Murphy's motion to pa... Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Winslow? I didn't see you there. Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate the finance committee. We spoke about a lot of this in detail. I mean, we all would love to have a crystal ball to know there's the certainty here. I really appreciate the retirement board has done a good job of making sure that we have done well and that we are ahead of the game. So I, that made me feel more confident that we're, you know, it's, we have the capacity to handle what's, whatever happens financially. So I think that's, that's the good thing. I think that we've been prudent and done well in our investments and have strategies in case the economy gets tougher than, than we might anticipate. So that's why I'm voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Let me just make sure there's no other lights. Seeing no other lights, Counselor Murphy's making...
Making...
Oh, Clerk Lucy, sorry. Oh.
I think you need to read the order.
You wanna read the order?
I don't think you read the order.
I thought he did, but go ahead.
I thought he just read 20... He only did the committee report, so you need, we need to read 20, 237-22.
Yeah, we haven't got to that one. Correct. That's, this is the vote. This is the vote.
Right.
Paper 237-22, order that the city council approve an increase in the COLA base from $16,000 to $18,000 for contributing retirees and survivors of the Marlin retirement system.
So on Counsel Murphy's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Counselor Seika, clerk will call the roll. Cologne-Hayes, Condon, Crowe, Linehan, McDonald, Murphy, O'Malley, Seika, Semenelli, Winslow, Spatafora. Spatafora, yes. Carrie's 3100. Congratulations. Next order of business, thank the council for entertaining me taking this out of, out of order. You're welcome. Next order of business, let's go back.
The Chair of the license is requested that we read all, that I read all these licenses together. Paper 288-22, petition, extended hours, Board of Borg Boston LLC of 90 Pleasant Street to be granted, extended hours periodically during the year when needed. Paper 279-22, petition, self-service gas station, Gibbs Oil Company, limited partnership with 728 Main Street, 30,000 gallons, it's a renewal. Paper 280-22, petition, self-service gas station, Speedway LLC, DBA Speedway, number 2504, of 214 Broadway, it's 40,000 gallons, it's a renewal. Paper 281-22, petition, self-service gas station, Snap Mart Inc., DBA Petrola of 245 Main Street, 30,000 gallons, it's a renewal. Paper 282-22, petition, self-service gas station, Wash Depot 1, Inc. of 333 Eastern Ave., 30,000 gallons, it's a renewal. Paper 283-22, petition, lodging house license, Metro North Housing Corp. of 280 Salem Street, for 11 units, units located at 22 Charles Street, it's a renewal. Paper 284-22, petition, lodging house license, Metro North Housing Corp. of 280 Main Street, for 14 units located at 115 Washington Street, it's a renewal. And paper 285-22, petition, lodging house license, Cedar House LLC of 280 Salem Street, for 14 units located at 116, 118 Cedar Street, it's a renewal.
On Counsel Seika's motion to refer to committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Next order of business.
Paper 286-22, order that in the interest of promoting, promoting a fair and transparent marijuana licensing process free from political influence and the potential for state...
I hit the button. Hold on, clerk, I'm sorry. Hit the tab button. Go ahead.
The potential for state ethics violations, that the code of the city of Marlin be amended to change the special permit granting authority for marijuana establishments from the Marlin City Council to the Marlin Planning Board include amending the following sections. Section 6.08.07b, definitions of special permit by deleting as further amended by City Council, paper 283 of 2018. Section 6.08.070d2b, by deleting City Council where mentioned and replacing with Planning Board. Section 12.12.010a, first paragraph, first phrase, by striking out City Council and replacing with Planning Board as follows, except for marijuana retailer, marijuana cultivator, independent marijuana testing laboratory, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana research facility, marijuana transporter, where a special permit shall be required by the Planning Board in accordance with MCC 12.12.020. Section 12.12.190, first paragraph, by striking City Council and replacing with Planning Board as follows. The marijuana establishment is defined by this ordinance to expressly only include marijuana retail, retailer, marijuana cultivator, independent marijuana testing laboratory, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana research facility, and marijuana transporter may be allowed only in the highway business, industrial 1 and industrial 2 zoning districts. For the marijuana establishment, overlay district, only by special permit granted by the Planning Board and only by conformance with the following controls and requirements. Section 12.12.190b, section 12.12.190g, section 12.12.190g4, section 12.12.190h, by deleting City Council where written and replacing with Planning Board. Section 12.28.010e, by deleting City Council where mentioned and replacing with Planning Board.
Counsel Seika for the committee, for the paper.
Thank you, Council President. I was going to just refer this paper to ordinance, but I...
Why do I keep doing that? I apologize. This touchpad is killing me.
Stop hitting the, the spacebar. When the city council first drafted this licensing process back in 2018, we named ourselves the Special Permit Granting Authority. This was not something that I was looking to do. We always knew that it had some pros and cons, but I would say that this past month was though, has rarely brought light to why I did not want us to be the Special Permit Granting Authority, and this is something that I think that we should reconsider. With the first three licenses that we voted on, I feel there was little political influence. Since then, it feels to me like we are in dangerous territory legally and ethically, changing the rules that were never questioned previously before because of one particular applicant. We have been, we have people associated with this applicant, reaching out individually to fellow colleagues, counselors, attending political fundraisers, and generally doing anything they can to exert influence to the city council. And we have counselors who are stating during committee meetings that they would be a witness in court against the city. This is exactly what we tried to avoid in 2018. When politicians can be influenced on things involving big money, bad things happen. We only need to look at what happened in Fall River to see what could potentially happen here. Right before the start of this evening's meeting, I received a screenshot of a post stating that Counselor Spatafora and I are accusing this entire city council of being corrupt, except for ourselves. That could not be further from the truth. We put this paper on the docket this evening in hopes that all of us would not be considered corrupt. And that if we wanna give away responsibility to someone else, we should give it to the cannabis licensing board. Special permits have always been granted by either the Marlin City Council or the Marlin Planning Board, not our committees or our commissions. If there was no special permit requirement, then the CLAC would be that body to approve or deny these certain establishments, but that is not the case. There is a special permit that you need to be granted in order for these establishments to open up in the city. And I feel that if this particular applicant is not trying to use political influence to get approval, then it shouldn't matter who is the granting authority for this special permit process. So I would like to refer this paper to the ordinance. I don't know if the Chair has anything to add, because when I called him last week and told him I was putting this on the docket, he, he agreed to sign on. Counselor Winslow, Counselor Spatafora, and myself tried to do something similar back in 2019, and we were accused of hindering the process of marijuana. I have no issues with marijuana shops in the city. We've already granted three. So I, I look forward to further discussing this in ordinance, and, and hopefully we can come to some sort of agreement. Thank you.
Okay, there's a lot of lights. So Counselor Crowe, everybody's lights on, so just beware. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. So actually, I did have a question to the sponsor. I know, because I, I really wanted to kind of offer a friendly amendment in, instead of just the Planning Board, is it, can we do Planning Board or CLAC? Because I do agree with you, is that we have the, and what CLAC stands for is Cannabis Licensing and Enforcement Commission. You know, so we, why we strip them of their power to grant the licenses when we don't do it to the Liquor Board, they do the enforcement, they do the licensing. And we have put together, I think, the CLAC, a, a strong team that really does look very in-depth at all of these things and brings the people in and works really well with them. And I should, I do agree that it should be with them to grant the licenses.
Hold that thought. Counsel Seika.
Thank you.
Counsel Semenelli also knows.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Crowe, I did speak to members of the CLAC today, and they do not want this particular authority, Special Permit Granting Authority. They actually agree when they said that it's either the Planning Board or the council that does special permits. The licensing board is actually a lot different, because they don't require special permits. That's why the licensing board is the granting authority for those particular licenses. Because I, earlier, I didn't care where it went, as long as it got off of the shoulders of us. Because I think, again, over the past month, this has been politically driven to try to influence each and every one of us up here to, to change city ordinances and what have you for a particular applicant. And that is what we were trying to deter from back in 2018. I was dead set against being the Special Permit Granting Authority for cannabis, and I wish that I never voted to become it back in 2018. The one vote in my eight and a half years of being on the city council that I wish I could take back, so.
So Counselor Crowe, you started before.
No, so, yeah, just getting referred to. And we are planning to just, I mean, I know there's a lot of questions, have an ordinance committee meeting next week. I know that we, last week we did have a meeting, and people had expected things to be on the, on the docket for this evening, but it really was, again, I've said this to other people, when you, you run the risk, when you have a 7:05 meeting, that is really quite in-depth, of, you know, that the clerk really kind of getting the, the minutes and all the orders and everything in, in, in correct fashion to make sure that it can be on the docket for the Thursday 10 o'clock deadline. You know, you run the risk of not being able to do that, and we won't be able to do that. And we do have a couple of things we need to sort of iron out to make sure that it is in the correct form. We did get some feedback from our city solicitor in, Michelle Romero, to help us put it in that form, but we just wanna make sure that we are sending things. So I think this, along with whatever comes, we'll all go to hearing at one time. So the, that's the goal, that's the plan. And so I, you know, I welcome the opportunity. And thank you, Counsel Seika, for putting this forward, because I do feel like some of the comments, some of the conversations, some of the diatribe that's been happening as of late, really does speak to that sort of political influence of the, the trying to push around, so.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe. Next, Counselor Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I, I echo my, my colleague, Counselor Seika. You know, I had said in the beginning, when we were discussing this and talking about this, about the zoning, and you know what my concerns were, as far as my, you know, neighborhood not having enough parcels to be able to put a cannabis store, shop, or whatever it may be called, in the neighborhood. Since then, I, you know, I've talked with Michelle Romero, and I've talked to Nelson Miller. They said there are a couple of places, not many, but there's a couple of places that, you know, a couple that cannabis shops can go in. You know, it doesn't make me tickle pink, only having like a couple of little locations. However, that being said, I never thought that this should be lying with the council. And, you know, I've been up here before, I've got 10 years in the past, and, you know, I've been involved in...
My fault.
Politics and public service for quite a while. I really don't even need this mic, you know that. But I, I really don't. I don't think it belongs with the city council. I never did. I think it does, I, I would like it to belong to the click-clack club or whatever they're called, I don't even know. But, you know, because they are the residing body, they're the commission, just like the liquor commission, city council doesn't have, doesn't have anything to do with that. It's a big topic, so you do get pulled from your regular duties as a city council, whether they're phone calls, or whether they're trying to discuss with other people, your views on it. So I don't believe it belongs with the city council, and never did. You know, I, I think that, I think it only has to go with the Planning Board because of the fact that it has a special permit process. So therefore, it can't go with, with CLAC, CLAC, whatever, whatever they are. But it definitely does not belong with the city council. And look, you know, my apologies to those folks that are out there and trying to get a license and, you know, not, not within the parameters that would be ideal for them to get a permit. I, I, you know, I empathize with that. I certainly do. But I just do not think that the city council should have that type of authority, because the subject of our knowledge really lies with the Planning Board, with Michelle Romero and, and her folks. They're the ones that work on this stuff on a day-to-day basis, and, and, and really put the meat and potato into the work on a day-to-day basis. And, and we don't. And I think it's unfair that not just ourselves, but it's also unfair to you. You know, so I, I truly believe that, you know, I, I totally support this paper to, to refer it to the Planning Board and let them be the deciding body on this subject matter.
This is going at ordinance, though.
Where's it going?
Just the ordinance.
You know, but we're gonna discuss it, right? We're gonna discuss the inordinance to where we're gonna put it. Well, I mean, you know, there's no secrets here. I mean, that's, that's the only place it can go. So, you know, so we'll do it in ordinance in an ordinance paper. I mean, that's, that's the way it goes. So, hey, let's face it, there hasn't been really a lot of secrets anyway during this whole process. And again, like, you know, my heart goes out to people that are trying to put this thing together, and I hope you can, I hope you can ration it out with the Planning Board and make it work for, for both entities. But I, I really think it's not a place to be with the city council.
Thank you, Counsel Semenelli. Counsel O'Malley. Are you hitting the button? There you go, you got it.
Thank, thank you, Council President. And then, you know, Counselor Semenelli's correct, it would go to the Planning Board after the, the ordinance committee. Not too many things change around here, so that's, that's good that that's still gonna stay the same. The first question I have for the petitioners is, who wrote this, who wrote this proposal? Who drafted it?
I did.
You wrote this?
Well, I wrote the beginning, and then we were instructed by the city solicitor's office to add...
Your mic's not on, counsel. Hold on. Your counsel's, your mic's not on. This is very tiki-tack here. Yeah, there you go.
Sorry. Yes, I wrote the first paragraph, and then we were instructed by the city solicitor's office that we had to include the whole ordinance in the word changes, so.
So you wrote the first paragraph, and the rest of it was written by the, the department?
Yep. That, let me pull it back up, sorry. Yep. That in the interest of promoting a fair and transparent marijuana licensing process, free from political influence and the potential for state ethics violations, that the code of the city of Marlin be amended to change the special permit. Yes, that was me.
Okay, great, thank you. So, you know, I, I do wanna like rehash some history so that we, the, the public is kind of aware how we got here. In 2018, I was the Chair of the Ordnance Committee, and Counselor Di Maria was the Council President at the time. And in order to make sure that this process was driven by the community and came from the community, we worked with Counselor Crowe to appoint an ad hoc committee with resident members. There was... There was a future member of the Cannabis Control Commission on it, Shailene Title. There were a number of residents that came and really worked hard and diligent to kind of come up with the ordinance that we have. And the main reason was to keep it as apolitical as possible because we wanted it to come from the community and not from us, for a lot of the concerns that were raised here tonight. I think we all realize that it was a political liability, regardless of what it was, and we wanted to make sure it was driven by the community. They recommended, and then they, we sent it on to the planning board, and so both that committee and the planning board recommended that the city council be the special permit granting authority, over the objections of many members of the city council. And the reasoning that the planning board had, and that the ad hoc committee had, was specifically because we are, can be held accountable at the ballot box. It allowed our residents and citizens to hold us politically accountable for the decisions that we make. That cannot be said for the planning board, which is unelected. That cannot be said for the CLC, which is unelected. We are the elected body that is responsible for giving out these special permits. We do not decide who gets licensed, that is the CLC. We do not decide who gets community host agreements, that's the mayor. We very intentionally kept it divided in order to avoid the exact things that you're referring to. I do think that this paper is not well thought out in terms of achieving the goal that it says it wants to. I do think that shifting it to an unelected body is not the way you get more accountability. I think that's the way you get less accountability. In my opinion, and I'll be clear on this, you know, I think it's good that it's being recorded. In my opinion, the current ordinance does not reflect the legislative intent of the city council in 2018 in terms of what we wanted, in terms of allowing buffer zones to be varied or relief be granted, or for the special permit granting authority, the city council to grant relief or have a finding that it would be not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Currently, the way it's operating, based on recommendations from the solicitor's office, it's not going the way our intent was. And I think, I do think that's one of the reasons why the ordinance committee, under Councilor Crowe's leadership and Councilor Linehan's leadership, and some great amendments by Councilor McDonald, we are looking to send it back to the planning board to make sure that it actually complies with what our intent was originally. I personally think that any applicant can still petition the city council for relief, and I think they should do that. I think it's only fair. I will also go on the record that I do not believe that all applicants in this process have been treated fairly. I do think that some applicants have been given very difficult times, and I'll be honest with you, there was some innuendo and unsaid things in the introductory that makes it seem as though some of us up here are doing something nefarious. I know that I can say, I have never testified for or against any pending applicant at any public meeting that we've had. I've never gone to the Board of Appeals to testify for or against any applicant that is currently pending. That same cannot be said for the sponsors of this paper. And so I find it interesting that we talk about state ethics violations, and we talk about whether or not we can be politically influenced, and whether or not maybe some of us would need to recuse ourselves, and whether or not some of us can be impartial. I know that I've never gone on the record at other public bodies and said, no, don't give this to them. So I don't understand how the petitioner, how the sponsors here could be impartial if the pending applicant ever came to the city council. I think that is the state ethics violation that we're talking about. I think that is something that we all should be really careful about what we do, because we have to be impartial. We can't take our personal animuses about what people say about us online and try to sink their application. That is not fair. That is a state ethics violation. So again, for everyone, the residents, the staff, the city councilors here, changing zoning requires seven, eight votes. I don't see this paper having a snowball's chance in hell of passing. I'm sure we can send it on to the ordinance committee and talk about it, and take up valuable time from the ordinance committee, but there's no reason why the responsibility should be shifted from this elected body to an unelected body. That's not good policy. Thank you.
Council Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't want to stifle debate on things. I think everybody has the right to file papers. The place for this to go is ordinance to talk about it. But I have to agree in a lot of ways with Councilor O'Malley. You know, we actually had the same conversation a year ago, and I voted at that point to send it to committee, where it was recommended unfavorably, for a lot of the reasons that he just went over. You know, as an elected body, we're more accountable to the public, we have the ability to take into account different nuances than the planning board has before them. At that time, when we decided not to move it forward out of committee and it failed, what resulted from that discussion was the desire among ourselves and the representatives from the CLC to look into the very things that we're doing now with the paper that I have filed in ordinance. Delivery, giving equity preference, as well as a lot of other things that have come to light based on pending state legislation, and other things that, as other applicants have gone through the process, we've realized are unclear, are redundant, or just could be clarified to make a more seamless process to get the community that we want and the businesses that we would like to have. I was very surprised to see this on the docket. We have an open order in ordinance right now that has the entirety of our marijuana licensing and ordinance. Literally anything you could want to do with marijuana is already in committee right now. The sponsors, Councilor Seega, you were there last week and left early. Our president has not been in attendance. This could have been raised a week ago in committee when we had the entire ordinance open, I would have welcomed that discussion. I welcome the discussion now, but as the vice chair of the committee, seeing something like this on the docket with phrasing like political influence and state ethics violations to boot is frankly insulting. I take that really, really seriously and really personally. As a board, we've just undergone a training together where we tried to set norms for how we were going to work together, give the courtesy of a heads up if you're filing things in someone's committee or in their ward, have conversations and be courteous with one another, and yet here we are with a surprise on the docket to the folks that run ordinance and the folks that have been discussing a package of reforms that our building commissioner, our city planner, you know, we have, name the city staff, they've been working on this for the past three, three or four months with us. We have a great package that's coming back to the council in a couple of weeks. There's no reason that we can't add this to the discussion, I want to be really clear on that. This is something that could completely be appropriate for us to talk about. My personal opinion is that we settled this a year ago. I don't think my opinion has changed. I think an elected body that's accountable to voters is the place to have these tough conversations. Our planning board does a lot of work, but they have a very, they have a limited scope, and they're not accountable to the residents in the same way that we have to be. We have to be able to work in partnership with them and the CLC. I welcome the discussion in ordinance. I don't think that my vote on this is going to change in terms of who should have the special permit, you know, granting authority, but I have to say, my entire reaction to it is swayed by having something like political influence and state ethics violations in the wording of the order. That is just, those are easily verifiable. You can look up all of our financial records on the OCPF website. If any of us had taken donations from cannabis applicants, it's like publicly viewable. That's not the case. If there were ethics violations filed against any of us, that is public information, and I wouldn't, I would not make that type of accusation about any of you. We spent, what, an hour and a half saying this to Councilor O'Malley a few weeks ago about how unbecoming it was to make accusations via legislation against another councillor. You know, I think we've played that out. I heard that loud and clear. This is not a good look for us as elected leaders in the community. I'm fine to refer this, but I, you know, I don't like to use my platform up here to have reactions like this, but this was, this was really upsetting to me, and I just don't think this is how we should do business.
Thank you, Council Linehan. Councilor Karen Cologne Hayes.
Thank you.
I hit it again. I have a mouse problem over here, sorry. Oh.
Well, okay. Councilor Linehan actually just really summed up a lot of what I was thinking. I was also insulted when I read this. I'm not even on committee yet, I sat, I think it was three hours in ordinance where so much was discussed. We had the city solicitor there. I thought it was great that we all agreed, it was unanimous where it was going to go. I was shocked when I saw this on and read it because, one, it could have been brought up at, during ordinance and discussed. It has merit to be discussed, definitely. But, you know, making accusations that something illegal is going on is, yeah, something that I thought we agreed we weren't going to do, or at least a heads up, a courtesy call to a councilor who spent their time and three hours of their time going over this. One of the things I did think about was the CLC, but now it seems like that might not be an issue. But I do also want to say that we have to stop, I've said this before, we have to stop bringing Facebook to this council body. There are lots of people who call us all, they, we're allowed to say whatever we want really on Facebook, but it's, people call us when there's something on the docket and try to give us their opinions on it. They're, it's okay to do that. I don't understand what the issue is. There's no political bribing or anything like that going on. I take calls all the time on things that are going on this agenda, and I speak with people. So I don't understand what the difference is here, and I'm also insulted. And I hope that we can move forward with the paper that we all voted on last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Council Karen Cologne Hayes. Councilor Winslow. Give me one second, Council. There you go.
Yeah, I know, I was surprised too, because I know that the Council Linehan's paper was very broad, and good to see that there was that discussion in Rules and Ordinance last week. And it just seemed like this should be something that Rules and Ordinance considers, so definitely there. You know, I think it's interesting because, you know, there's this dynamic of, I remember, you know, we had the recommendations from the planning boards on the buffer zone, and essentially, when the council looked at that, was going to basically not have any place in the city that could get a license. And I actually appreciate Council Seega stepped up even there, and we made some changes and created a kind of a special overlay up on Broadway. And so, I mean, I think that was positive involvement of the council to make sure that we had a fair and open process. And that was when I was working with Council Matheson, who put in several papers of making sure we created a fair and open process. And I do think that, you know, seeing that, you know, at the time, the planning board throwing barriers to this, and where I come from, I mean, I'm not taking any contributions from anybody, I'm involved with the cannabis industry, but I do support entrepreneurs, just like, you know, in Maplewood Square, we had young people struggling, trying to figure out their licensing things. I am supportive of making sure that we, as a community, support residents who are wanting to invest in our community, and this is a big lift for people. So I, you know, that's really thing, and I think that ultimately here, you know, why I would support continuing this in the council is really the buck stops here, where I see the planning board, the ZBA, often, you know, they don't, they want to duck political issues or the C-LAC. I mean, they, you know, we're elected to deal with political issues, and so I think it is logical to continue it here. And I'm certainly willing to have more discussion in the Rules and Ordinance. I'm not on that committee at this point, but I just think that it's, you know, let's move forward, let's refer it, let's get a good paper out that that committee votes on, and go forward and make some changes. You know, it's not unusual to make changes, just like we had to do with our CPC committee and that type of thing. So let's move forward, but let's get a paper out of Rules and Ordinance and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Winslow. Councilor McDonald. Matt. Council McDonald.
I echo many of the comments of my colleagues. I don't want to discuss the substance of this on the floor because we're going to refer to the ordinance committee, so. But I do have two questions for the sponsor. And the first is, would you be willing to remove this first sentence that I've heard a really strong ouch from my fellow counselors here, so that we can have a discussion about the policy and the merits of it, so that we would start order that the code of the city amold to be amended, et cetera, et cetera? That was, that's question number one. And question two is that, there is another section of the cannabis licensing 608070D1B that says, in the initial application process, the CLC is explicitly supposed to take into account the support of the ward council for the application. And so, did you consider including that? And do you think if the goal is to remove the council's influence, that that should be included as well?
Councilor Seega, you want? Council Seega.
Thank you, Council President. So I think that the ward councilor should be reached out to at the beginning of the process. I think once the application is submitted to the CLC, I think it stops there because then it goes to them. But just like any other business that comes into Ward 8, they reach out and they ask my opinion and my advice to whatever is going in place. So I do feel that the opinion of the ward councilor is good. I've had several people actually put in applications in Ward 8 without talking to me first, and I have told them that if they make it through CLC, I will speak to them then, but until that process is complete, there's no need to. If they didn't reach out to me before they put the application in, I don't need to have any conversations until I know if they're moving forward. Because they didn't care about my opinion before the application was put in, I'm going to wait until after it's done. And as far as, maybe I can possibly change it, I never sat up here and accused any of you of taking bribes. I just said we were, you know, my intention was, we're going down a slippery slope here. I had to leave the meeting early after an hour and 15 minutes for a family issue last Tuesday night, so I apologize. But I thought the meeting was just about done with the three amendments that we were looking to make. I had no idea we were going to go into making the council the buffer zone and all of that. So that's why this paper was added, because you had voted to recommend out, I thought your recommendations were actually going to be on the same docket as what I was told. So I apologize that I didn't bring this up during that particular ordinance committee meeting. I didn't think we were going to be addressing anything other than those three, the wording for the building, and I, I'm sorry, but I can't think of the other two off the top of my head at this moment. So that's why I put this paper on. I apologize, you know, if I've, you know, ruffled some feathers with the wording that I chose, but I really do believe that, like, Councilor O'Malley sat in that meeting last week talking about, and I don't mean to say anything, and I'm not looking for him to get in trouble either, but I question ethics when he sits in a committee meeting and talks about potentially being a witness in a case that we're being sued. That could have, that could have an issue, that could be an issue for us. So I just, I don't want any of us up here to be in a position where we don't want to be in, and that was the intent of this paper, so. I don't know, can I change the wording next week in ordinance, or can this get referred and then we can possibly amend the wording? Let me think about how I would like to change it, and I will do that over the next week before we have that meeting.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I just want to recognize, as Council Linehan said, that she's put in, in particular, months of work, working with our staff to get here, and so I understand miscommunications happen. I also just, I just want to recognize that the impact of that is that we created a process, and we spent a lot of time, and that has the effect of kind of bracing the energy that Council Linehan put into that. So I think that would be a helpful gesture to help us stay focused on the policy before us. So thank you.
You have a say, Council? Council Seminelli for the second time.
Thanks, Mr. President. You know, I got to say something, this man. You know, since I've been in this seat for the last, I don't know what it is, four or five months, really better start getting it together. I mean, this is just becoming really ridiculous, back and forth, and, you know, this ethnic stuff, and, you know, it-
You're off, you're off. I got a touchpad here. I, it's, I got a touch pad here.
Listen, it isn't helping anybody. It's got to end. It really does. I mean, you know what? You know, I've made these comments since I've been sitting up here for the last month or so, and you know what? I don't, I got to be honest with you, I don't even know how long I'm going to last up here. I really don't. Because I don't, I don't feel like, except for doing things in my own neighborhood, in my ward, I don't feel like much is getting done up here because of this. Now, look, Counsel, Counsel Amanda, Amanda Lenahan and, and Pay Crowe, who's the chairman and the committee and co-chair of the ordinance committee, let them do their job. Let them sit in there, let them hammer it out. I'm not too particularly happy about, you know, this, this, this whole cannabis process. I'm really not. I, I got to be honest here. I see nothing above pointing fingers, fighting back and forth at each other, and I just got here and I'm like kind of in the middle of it. And I don't like it. And you're starting to aggravate me, and that's not good. Trust me. So I'm telling you, we need to start working together. I mean, all right, let's put, we'll put this paper in ordinance so Counselor Lenahan can push out exactly what we were talking about in the meeting the other night with the amendments that were made. All right, let's do that then. I have never seen anything like this in all my years on being on the city council. I haven't. And look it, I got to say it, both sides, if that's what you want to call each other these days, are in fault. It's time to let the axes go and start working with one another to move the city forward. If you don't want to, quit. Go home. Let somebody else come up here and let them try and, and let them move the city forward. It's not fun to come up here anymore. Not at all. And I'm starting to get aggravated. And, and I'm telling you, you don't want to get me aggravated because it isn't pretty up here. But we've got to start working together on things. There's things that I don't like, but, you know, you, you got to grudge bear it sometimes. We're never going to get anywhere if we can't get something as simple as this resolved. And look, there's been daggers and knives thrown in those back rooms on people, on who's getting what and where and how. I don't even know half these people before I come in here. But it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. You know, you want to help this person, but you can't help this person because this person don't like this person, this person's bad at that. Come on, we're in this kindergarten? I've never seen anything like it. And I think we're all at fault here. Including myself, I'll take blame for whatever. I don't care, I'm used to it. But I, I really do. This is, this is just getting really out of hand. People telling me what I should have in my neighborhood, what I shouldn't have in my neighborhood, you don't want this, you don't want that. Don't tell me what I want and what I don't want. I'll tell you what my neighborhood wants. They're the body that elected me in office, and just like they have elected all of you. But this is, this is not going anywhere. I, I, I thought we had this discussion a few weeks ago with some other, with a little different subject matter. Look it, here we are again. And the only ones that suffer are the people that are actually trying to get a license to do business in the city and for the citizens of this city that actually want to go to a cannabis shop. I, I don't know. So I say, you know what, let's send this back to ordinance once again. Let's send it back to ordinance so we can send it back out the way it was written. Any of you have my support on that? And let's change the buffer zone. Now I'm aggravated. Thank you very much for your cooperation.
Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be short and sweet. Um, I'm going to support sending this to ordinance. I do believe it's a discussion that we do need to have, regardless of what took place last week. There has just been a, an underlying current of events that I've seen blossom over the last few months that have made me a little uncomfortable with what's happening. And I think it, if we send this to ordinance, we can sit and we can have a reasonable discussion amongst ourselves about our roles and responsibilities if we do keep this particular approval process. I think we should also talk about, is it in the best interest of us to keep the approval process, or would it be better held somewhere else? I think that's a reasonable request for us, for this, to be on this docket in light of what I've seen going on and comments I've seen and heard. And somehow, we need to be able to sit and, um, find a, find, I'm going to choke. Find a way to work together. But that takes trust. And I don't think this council has a lot of trust in each other, so I think that's going to be an uphill battle at this point. But I hope that trust or no trust, that we can all look past ourselves and look towards our city and our constituents and come up with what's in the best interest of them, not within the best interest of any of us personally. So, um, as I said, I will support sending this to ordinance. I think it's a good discussion that we need to have, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counselor Karen Cologne-Hayes for the second time.
Thank you. I appreciate Counsel Seega saying that you'd re, think about rewording some of the beginning, but I'm not going to vote to put this back to, um, ordinance because I think that when we were in our training, we talked about how we were going to do a code of conduct, and one of them was going to be to give a heads up to award counselors and give a heads up to counselors before surprising on the, on the docket. So the lack of trust, I agree with you, and I think that this could have been well handled with a, with a quick phone call to either Counsel Crowe or Counsel Lenahan before it came here. So I am thinking about why it wasn't made, why that phone call wasn't made. So I think that what, what was worked on for three hours last week with everyone was enough and that maybe this can be brought up when it's discussed again in ordinance. So, um, I'm just, I'm not going to vote for that tonight.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel O'Malley for the second time.
Thank you, and this is just in response to my name being stated by Counsel Seega. To, to correct the, the record.
You're next.
I stated in ordinance that I do not believe the current, uh, ordinance as written reflects the legislative intent of the city council specifically related to buffer zones. In addition, I said I do not believe that the applicant that has been specifically named at other ordinance committee meetings by Counsel Seega, uh, the applicant who has been, testified against by Counsel Seega and by Counsel Spatafora at the zoning board of appeals, uh, that that applicant is not being treated fairly. Whether or not that treatment is happening in public or behind the scenes is to be determined. And yes, I am willing to say that here at a city council meeting, I'm willing to say that on TV, and I'm willing to say that in court because it's how I truly feel. And it's not unusual for witnesses to testify in court. Thank you.
Counsel Condon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Semenelli is exactly right, and, uh, he's very passionate when he speaks, and that's a good thing because you know it's coming from his heart. But I don't think there's a city counselor up here that hasn't met with either a petitioner or people that, that you represent or, uh, you need to find out what both, the story is on both sides. Nobody's going to tell me not to meet with somebody or, uh, see what a property's like or isn't like. I, I voted against two out of the three cannabis licenses because I didn't particularly like the properties, but that doesn't mean I wouldn't vote for some in the future if I do like the properties. But, uh, I don't think anybody can sit up here and say, I would never go to a property to find out what it's like or, uh, whether or not there's a possibility that you might vote for it or not vote for it, because you want to find out all sides, especially if you're going before another board. I mean, I go before the planning board, you know, sometimes you get what you want from your neighborhood, sometimes you don't, you know? We're supposed to know what our neighborhood, why it would be a better neighborhood when something's proposed, but sometimes that just doesn't work out, you know? But you're still going to represent the person going up if you're in favor and you think it is going to improve your neighborhood. That's what our job is, so, and whether you agree with it or not, you know, uh, I have no problem with anybody here going to meet and finding out what, if you're going to vote on something, you need to vote, know, you need to know what you're voting on and why you're voting a certain way. You know, so that's just the way I feel about it. Relax, Counsel Semenelli. You've got a long time left up here.
I got it, John.
You got it. He's good. Okay, that's all I got to say.
Counsel Seega.
I'll just be brief, thank you. I just want to go on the record and state that I did reach out to Counsel Crowe Thursday morning and told her that I was putting this paper on the docket. I, I didn't realize we had to let the vice chair know as well. I reached out to the chair of ordinance and told her that this paper was on the docket. So Counsel Crowe did know that this was going to be on the agenda for this evening, on Thursday morning, before I sent it to the city clerk. So, thank you.
Counsel Crowe.
No, I will say, it, it kind of changed, and so when Counsel Seega had reached out that it was going to be a resolve, and I was like, okay, you mean, so I didn't really go in depth of that. And then, um, as it came out, because it's us that's making that decision, it's not a resolve, we're not asking someone else, it's not our wish. So it did come out a little bit different form, but she did say that she was about the planning board and that she was going to put a resolve on the, on the docket. So I was going to say she did.
Uh, I will speak briefly. I think everybody said it. Uh, I will support, I usually support everything going to ordinance to have that discussion. You know, Counsel O'Malley, and I don't want to go tit for tat, I mean, you speak often against petitioners in various parts of the city, and that is your right, and I think that's my right as a counselor to, you call it testimony, I've come here before and spoken against some developments and supported others, so that's just the job of a counselor. And if that's something I can't do, then, then I will continue doing that. And Counsel Lenahan and myself had a very hot-to-hot conversation, I don't know, was it probably two months ago, Counsel? So when, when we talk about influence, there has been no problems with this process, not I, not efficient, but no problems up until one participant didn't get a license. I also made a motion two years ago to go back to ordinance, take a pause to reflect this. It was violently denied. Because I think every time you have a new ordinance, especially like Community Block Development, excuse me, we, we had a great presentation today by, by, um, Community Preservation Committee, you have to go back and revisit these all the time. But this particular instance has certainly been political. And if anybody up here is saying that it hasn't been, you're lying to yourself, you're lying to the camera, and you're lying to the residents. That's as simple as it can be. The reason why I know that is because, and I called Counsel Lenahan, and I'm not going to say the name, but an attorney called up and said, "I am considering taking a case in Marlin, ask me my opinion." And I said, quote unquote, "Take any case you want, want to take money out of your pocket." The individual said to me, "Well, they're going to change the ordinances for this, for my, my potential client." And 24 hours later, there was a paper in ordinance by Counsel Amanda Lenahan. And I called up Counsel Lenahan, and I had a great conversation with her, and I believed her, but I said, "I find it very troubling." Now, as a counselor, she can do that. So that's why I supported this paper. I think it's, I think it's good to go back. But when an attorney calls me, telling me they're going to take a case, and I'm not saying Counsel Lenahan did it with her own volition, and I told her that. But that is facts. That is not hearsay, that's exactly what was said to me. And I called up Counsel Lenahan, that, that, I, I was at a soccer match because I was shocked, because I was, I was shocked. Counsel Lenahan said, "No, I haven't had that conversation, it's a coincidence," and I believed her. And then I went to ordinance and we were updating the ordinance because the state has pending litigation, which hasn't changed. And up until that meeting, because I have not gone to any meetings, if you looked at the committee meetings, very little. I went to the Public, the Public Works, wanted the budget because I want to hear a couple of things, I've stayed out of it as the president, it's supposed to be neutral. Counsel Crowe, myself, had many discussions, and she told me the three topics that were going to be talked about that evening, and I talked to the chairman of, well, now it's a different person, but I talked to Mr. Hogan about the presentation being made. That, the last item that Counsel, again, can absolutely do this, Counsel Karen McDonald put an item before that committee in the evening night. That, that was not discussed at previous meetings, it came up late. So when that was put on the thing, I supported putting this on here and sending it to the docket. And you're right, we are an elected body, we have to deal with the tough stuff. But I can tell you right now, my first inclination when we did the cannabis was to send it to the liquor board. Because it was Counsel Seega who was the president and Counsel Spatafora who was the ordinance chair that passed this ordinance with the help of Mr. Hogan. And it was new to everybody, right? It was new to everybody. COVID came in, three licenses it became for the committee. I say this all the time, I voted for three. I voted for three. But this has become very political. I, I, I look, I look forward to the dialogue in ordinance. I know there's other, some other topics going up there. I believe we're going to have it in, in August, but, but I support sending it to ordinance. I just wanted to say my piece. Counselor Lenahan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I absolutely acknowledge that we had that conversation. I don't want to drag this out tonight, but I take my reputation extremely seriously. What you're saying is simply not based in fact. I don't know what lawyer you're talking about, I've had no conversations with any attorneys. I, I don't fool around with this stuff. I only have my reputation and my ethics. I don't doubt whoever you're talking about, if you had that conversation, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just not going to let this, you, you don't just get to say things about my character that aren't true. This legislation has been in the works since January. I've spoken to the mayor about it, I've spoken to the city solicitor about it. I'm well aware that there's a lawsuit. We've taken every possible step that we could to make sure that the legislation is working independently of any perception that it would have anything to do with a lawsuit or a particular applicant. When we raised this exact same paper a year ago, the minute stayed that it was in reaction to a specific proposal that had come before us, that we all didn't like the outcome. So we have been in this exact boat before, if that's what you're saying is happening here. I don't, I don't subscribe to that viewpoint. I, I, I can't tell you how you view the world, but I can defend my own character. I don't want to go back and forth on this, but this is just not factual, and I take my reputation very seriously.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel O'Malley for the third time.
And, and final time, hopefully. So I, I agree with the sentiments that have been stated here tonight, particularly Counsel Semenelli. This has already been discussed in ordinance ad nauseam. You all had two meetings about it, the last one was over three hours, we were here really, really late. I, I moved to table this. The work has already been done, let's refer to the planning board, the work that has already been vetted. This paper, this thing is not timely, I moved to table, which is a, takes precedence if seconded.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, and Counsel O'Malley's motion to table, seconded by Counsel Lenahan. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne-Hayes. Yes.
Cologne-Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Lenahan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Seega. Semenelli. Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora. Fails six, five to six. Six to five. Well, yeah, but he got, they got five votes, six, five to six. On Counselor Seega's motion to refer to ordinance, clerk will call, seconded by, seconded by Counsel Crowe. Clerk will call the roll. This is to refer to ordinance. Cologne, Cologne-Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Lenahan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Seega. Semenelli. Winslow. Spatafora. Spatafora, yes. Passes eight to three. Next order of business. That is referred.
Paper 287-22, Order. The City Council discussed the disposition of property owned by the city identified as parcel number 185-575-507 in the City of Marlin Assessing Maps, also known as Lewis Comway/Robin Street. Such discussion to include a description of the parcel and its present use and possible alternatives for future use, care, custody, and control of the property, which will be maintained at the sole expense of the leasing, and the payments include the amount of any taxes that would otherwise be due to the city, as well as including whether or not to enter a license agreement for business use of said property.
On Counsel Seega for the, you gonna refer this, Counsel?
Refer to public property.
Okay, on Counsel Seega's motion to refer this to public property, all, all in favor? All opposed? Sounds like the ayes have it, if there's any opposed, let the record stay. Okay, no, no opposed, item is referred to public property, next order of business. We already, we already went through the Counsel McDonald's resolve, right? So we skipped that one.
Correct, Paper 290-22, Committee Report, the Standing Committee on Parking Review.
Yeah, this is the one for the historical, right?
289-22.
Yeah, yeah. I got it. You got it? Okay.
Paper 289-22, Resolve, that, that with the approval to receive the historic M.I. to Commerce Building at 15 Ferry Street and move it to 77 Salem Street on the current grounds of Marlin High School. The City of Marlin should, number one, engage in a robust input process with Marlin High School students, teachers, staff, and parents, as well as the Marlin Public Schools Leadership and School Committee to determine how the building can be best be used. And number two, mitigate any environmental consequences in the downtown area due to the loss of green space.
So on Counsel McDonald, you wanna speak to this? And there was a couple of squashes, Counsel McDonald.
Yeah, I wanna keep this brief. My goal here was just to get us on the record about a couple of the things that came up in this conversation in our last meeting, and, and make sure that those are, are confirmed. I did email this to Maria Louise before I submitted it, to just check that the, that this accurately reflected the Mayor's Office understanding, and they were okay to have that submitted. I, you know, I'm, I'm excited about the possibilities, assuming this building actually makes it to where it's going. I am, but I've, I've gotten more questions about this from constituents than almost anything else we've done recently. And I think that reflects that people, you know, didn't, don't, don't see these aspects of the process and the way that it's played out, so I want us to be able to get on the record about that. I want, so, so that includes just making sure that the Marlin High School community has input in this, strong input, and that we do any, address any green space consequences. I wanna, I wanted to specifically know that there's a sadness in here, that like, the Marlin High, if you all have driven past, they just planted a community garden literally on the site that we approved. They put the beds in like the following day. And I don't know what happened, that they, somehow that message didn't get there, but I just wanna say on the record, I am, I will personally dedicate counsel, my counsel funds to helping move those gardens, to honor the good work that those high school students did, or any other way that I can help make sure that the good work they put into the gardens doesn't get literally a house dropped on top of it. So, anyways, I, this is why I put this on the docket, and I hope I can, and I ask for your support.
Okay, a couple of speakers, Counsel Colleen Hayes, Col, Colin Hayes, excuse me.
Cologne Hayes, okay.
I, I skip the three names every time, I gotta take my time to say.
So, thank you. When we voted on this, when it came before us, I voted with making sure that we would talk to the, and have communication with the Marlin High School, the families, and the youth, and I, for this specific reason. One, they didn't know about it, I did get a lot of calls also. Two, the community gardens were just put up, and I contacted, actually, I was contacted by the person who got the grant. They have another grant, they're supposed to be putting in more, so they were unaware of this, and I, I, like, I feel bad the same way. So I offered to help also, so I'm, I'm glad that you actually put this into words, what I had spoke about, so thank you for that. And I hope everybody else supports it, because there's a lot of miscommunication going on right now, and the school community needs to be involved, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel O'Malley. Hold on one second, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley.
I would also like to be added as a sponsor, I, we, we, we're ships passing in the night, and I wasn't able to get on to the sponsorship, so I, I appreciate being added to the sponsor, to the City Clerk. Again, I think we might have another crack at this. You know, we took a vote, which was very, you know, like a resolution the last time, to show our, our, our desire to, to take this building on. But you know, there is a formal process to accept a gift from, from someone, so I do think we have another crack at this. There is a chance, potentially, that we move it across the street directly. There is a chance that we move it literally 25 feet, 50 feet, to the, to the left, to the, to the underutilized parking lot. I think there's ways that we can do this that doesn't knock down a great, you know, prefab, or like, a house that was built with the shop class, and with solar panels, and a really cool, you know, little garden for, for the students. So I think we still have a chance, fully in support of this, hoping together we can all work and figure out the best possible location for this building. Cause to Counsel Winslow's point, we don't wanna see this to go the same way as the old railway, railway car that got knocked down. I even remember that, so the fact that it made it to my lifetime and was still knocked down was pretty sad. So, looking forward to working with the council and the Mayor's Office and the school, thank you.
Hey, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate the, the proposal being, being put forward, and I always wanna see that we're working with the school and students, and always happy we've have a lot of gardens along the bike trail, and we can look at other opportunities that are convenient and get our students engaged in this. And, and hopefully this will be, you know, we'll work to make sure this ends up being an asset, and that, and that we, all the work that's going into the gardens is replicated, thanks.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President, just briefly, I also wanna thank Counsel McDonald for putting this forward and for gathering sponsors on it. You know, as with a lot of decisions before us, this is not simple, and we have imperfect decisions that we have to make. I don't think anybody wanted to see us lose the building, but I think, you know, what I learned in the days afterwards is that the community was sort of taken aback that it happened so quickly, and you know, I know for those of us who've been here longer, you know, I've only been on the council, this is my third year, I know this process preceded me by many, many years, but I do think that it's good to bring in the voices of the community. I got, like Counsel McDonald said, a lot of constituent calls about this the next day. It's certainly an important issue, and I think that we, you know, have to balance, as I said originally during the original vote, the, the need to preserve the building with not wanting to lose the green space, and we've made the vote that we've made, and I think that doing a little bit of communication will go a long way towards making that school community feel included, and I, I would also be perfectly willing to put up counsel funds to find a way to preserve that garden, or move it, or work with them, I was so heartbroken when I saw that, I didn't realize that was underway, and when I saw the, the pictures online of it going in the next day, I just thought, oh my God, what did we just do? We don't wanna be, you know, the Wicked Witch of the West, or whatever, plunking a house on top of their garden, so let's work with them. I think this is a good start to that conversation, and I wanna thank the original author for putting it forward.
My mic's on, Counsel Condon.
Thank you, Counsel President. We voted to take that building and to put it over into 77 Salem Street. That particular location, which I'm very, very familiar with, it's, it's a historical, like a corridor there, where you've got the high school, that building will go over there. You have the fire station, central fire station. Davenport Estate, the Baptist Church. That is a highly respected historical area. So I don't know where you, you think we're gonna move it, but if we, that historical commission does their homework. They truly do. And for them to vote that, to go there, I would be in favor of going there. You know, if we can find another place to, for, I'm not sure exactly what you wanna put there, but find more green space on the 77 Salem Street, I'd be all in favor of it, but I think that's the perfect location for this historical building. So I'm, I'm just not sure what you're trying to accomplish, Gary, with this resolve, and it is just a resolve.
Hold that thought, Counsel, Counsel McDonald, I think we'll, we'll reply. Counsel McDonald.
Yeah, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to change the location of the building. I'm, I'm saying, given that the building, the plan is to move the building there, I just wanna make sure that we talk to the school about what we do with the building. So, what offices go there, is there a museum, is there a teen center, are there, you know, is there something related to the library, right? So make sure that we talk to them, so, and they, and they see us voting to support that, yes, we're on the record, that's important, talk to school community. Since we got, since I received a number of questions about why did you talk to the school community? So, it's just getting that on the record, and you know, in terms of the green space, I mean, I intentionally said, like downtown area to try to give more flexibility, maybe we can add some trees, expand, you know, some other areas, but just to try to do what we can to mitigate that impact in the neighborhood, that's all.
Okay. Counsel Condon, anybody else? I would just, is anybody else? I would just add, fully understand the resolve, can we, and I, I don't know if it was said in the last meeting, I, I, I don't recall, can we just add, if I, if I, it was mentioned, somebody remind me, that any plans for the relocation goes back to the, to the Public Properties Commission? Was that added in the last, the vote? I would just say, cause that ties us all together, because the school property, for most people don't realize, is not under the jurisdiction of the school committee, it's under the jurisdiction of the public property committee. So I would just add, you put a three there, it just says, the final, before the, the final plans are approved, the, the, the Public Properties Commission gets a look at it. That's the only I would ask. Which I think ties in the same thing, replacing green space, what, I mean, the plan might be something different for the school, but I, I, I think the, it should come back to the public property, just to say where the location is. And I know, I was talking to Scott Fitzpatrick, who used to be the past building inspector, was actually working for, I forget his name, is it Mr. Wu? If I said his name, what is it? Dr. Wang. They're, they're looking to move it pretty quickly, costs are around $195,000 to move that without the foundation, so they're trying to get that done because of the escalation in cost. So if you don't mind, if the sponsor would amend to saying, you know, final location is sent to the, the Public Property Committee. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel. Is it on? Oh, I don't know why this is not staying on, there you go.
I, I have no problem adding to that, I would just look to Maria Louise and Michelle Romero, if you have any reaction to that.
Yeah, I just, thank you, Michelle Romero, City Planner. Are you saying that it be sent to the, it's the public facilities that has?
Public facilities, I'm sorry.
Okay, or you're talking about your own property committee?
No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about.
Okay, so yeah, we, we're working closely with the, with the petitioner, with the surveyor, Nelson Miller and I have already had meetings about the move and the whole permitting process, so public facilities will definitely be involved. They're gonna prepare a site plan.
Yes.
And they're gonna save as many, there's a botanist, tree specialist, I forget the name of it, who's surveying all the trees on the property, is gonna save, under strict, you know, direction to save every tree possible, to minimize the amount of green space that's being removed. It's a very finite footprint for the building, so I don't know, I think it would be public facilities.
Public facilities, that's what it is.
That the plan be submitted to public facilities, but we'll be, we'll be working with them anyway, so they'll see it. So I don't know if you have to put it in as a condition or a recommendation.
Well, I take your word on it, then, that's fine. I think, cause I think it answers some of the questions that, replace with green space, actually, I know we debated the location at 77, you know, is it this way, is it to the right, you know, and I think we won't have that till we figure out, based on the tree survey, and where it could possibly go.
You specified the corner of Holden and Salem, that area, but exactly where is still to be determined?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
All right, see no other question, wait, Counsel Condon, you already spoke, right? All right, no other lights. You also said, Counsel?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so on Counsel, or anybody else wanna be added to this resolve? Okay, on Counsel McDonald's motion, wait, on Counsel McDonald's, I lost my place in here, where are we? Here we go, on, you wanna, Counsel McDonald's motion to pass the resolve sponsored by Counselor, yep, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, you also wanna be added to the paper, right, correct? So Counsel, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, it's sponsored by Counsel Colin Hayes, Amanda Linehan, Counsel McDonald, Counsel Steve Winslow, and Counselor O'Malley. All in favor? All opposed? Ayes have it, passes. Next order of business.
Paper 290-22, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Parking Review has considered Paper 294-22. Make the following report that the committee recommends this resolve be reported out favorably to the City Council. Resolve that it is sent to the City Council that the traffic regulations be updated with the addition of the following sections. Addition of Section 5.10A, vehicles to be registered in Marlin. Persons becoming residents of Marlin having relocated from out of state or within state are required to register their vehicle to their Marlin address. No vehicle bearing out of state plates or vehicle registered or principally garage in another city or town in Massachusetts shall be permitted to park on any city street or combination of city streets more than four times over a 30-day period. Enforcement of the above regulation shall take place from Sunday to Thursday between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, provided that an initial one-time 14-day grace period shall apply to each vehicle. The parking department may issue a monthly visiting pass permit to those requiring the ability to park on city streets for more than the time permitted by this regulation. Passes issued shall only be valid for parking for the immediate vicinity of the address of the permit holder. Monthly visitor passes will not be issued as a substitute for the resident properly registering the vehicle in Marlin. Each permit shall contain the registration number of the vehicles to which it was issued. The parking department may issue a monthly visiting pass permit to those residents who have submitted the following documentation. One, a completed, a completed application in a form determined by, by the parking department. Two, a copy of the applicant's driver's license with the address within the city. Three, a copy of a valid registration, vehicle registration for the vehicle for which the application is made. Monthly visiting passing permit shall expire 30 days from the date of issuance. The fee for a monthly visiting parking permit shall be $25. Parking permits shall be provided to those residing in Marlin who have vehicles or vehicles registered outside of Marlin due to active military service or act, or are actively enrolled as a full-time student in college. Additionally, parking permits for caregivers shall be provided. Permits for military students and caregivers shall be provided at no cost. Updated through addition of Section 5.15, 5.15, Penalty for Violation of Parking Regulations. Vehicle not registered in Marlin, AID, I don't know what that means, $25, Section 5.10A.
Paul Condon, Counsel Condon. Counsel Condon for the paper. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. On Counsel Condon's motion to receive, to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counsel Condon for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. You're not very enthusiastic people.
I know, this is a big one.
Do you wanna hear the committee report? Okay, we've met on this, we've met on this probably five or six times. And I wanna thank Mr. Hogan, who really put this together. But if you remember trying to institute resident parking throughout the community, it it just didn't seem like it was gonna work, cause it was really affecting a lot of people. But if you look at this, the way it's written, people only have to do one thing. And that's to register their car in the City of Marlin if you want to park overnight. Now, caretakers.
Military students.
Military.
And students.
People and students all get visitors passes for nothing. This was brought about, I had a situation where one house had 10 vehicles, and nine of them were out of state plates. I mean, that is ridiculous, people just doing something like that. People just doing something like that. And this was in the wintertime, and they were taking up nine spaces on the street. So, if we do allow this, and we do it right, and they get four warnings before they actually get a ticket, it's an informational thing. Do you realize that you have to register with the city of Malden if you're going to park in our streets? So I think it's an opportunity to get this done, and it'll be a resolve that goes before the traffic commission, so that they will vote it and actually endorse the parking department to control this. And there's no intention to go busting into neighborhoods and giving people a bad time. It's really an informational thing, because a lot of people really don't, I don't think they realize that when they move into the city of Malden, and they move, say, as a tenant in Everett and just move to Malden, that they have to insure their car and pay excise taxes to the city that they move in. A city clerk may be able to tell us more about that, but, do they?
What's that? That's the treasurer's office.
Oh, that's the treasurer? Okay. No, but I, I really think that this will be a good thing, and it's not really invasive on our constituents.
Yeah, so this, there's a lot of lights, so Council, let's go in a row. Councilor Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I honestly totally support this, and we have had a lot of conversations about this. And, you know, what I liked about it is, it's almost the simplicity, is not really making our residents do a lot of heavy lifting to, you know, get all these things. I, actually, a friend has gone and used my car for a couple of days, and unfortunately she lives in Everett, and let me tell you, trying to get a visitors pass so it could park four streets up, well, a little more than four streets, was the ordeal. You have to go in, there was, it was, it was, and if there's any last minute people coming to visit, you're in trouble, because you have to actually physically go in and bring all the paperwork in to get a visitors pass even for one night. So, I really appreciate this even more, trying to go through the Everett process. So, and I'm fully supportive of this, going to the traffic commission and being in the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Crowe. Councilor Karen Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. I was on the committee, and so we did try really hard to make it as less onerous on our residents as possible. So rather than having a citywide parking policy, this, I think, really will do what it was intended to do, which is to capture unregistered vehicles so that we can have, get, you know, our excise taxes and also get the, or not unregistered, but registered in a different city or state off of our streets to make room for other parking. And so, I think that it also leaves room. I'm somebody who has a lot of visitors a lot, and out of state visitors from New York, so I think this really was the best plan that gave lots of options for people to have visitors and not make Malden feel like we're unwelcoming to visitors, while still capturing the unregistered vehicles that seem to be a big problem in other areas. So, I'm in full support, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor O'Malley.
I would like to congratulate Councilor Condon on a hard, a hard, long battle to cut this going. When we both, when I joined the council and he rejoined the council in 2016, this is one of our goals, and to now see it done, you know, seven years later, I mean, it literally took us seven years, that's pretty crazy. Yeah, it's like, like a marriage, right? Like, once you get past seven years, it's like a thing. So, you know, I'm really happy that we're getting this done. To Councilor Crowe's statement, I mean, it is the simplicity of it. I think it was the aha moment, that, hey, this is already a law, that you have to register your vehicle here. Let's just put that in the regulations and not have to worry about parking passes. And honestly, the same way, we designed a really good marijuana approval process that was copied by Boston, I think that we might have just discovered a really good way to manage parking in the city, in cities all around Massachusetts. Because now you have automatic resident parking at night, and you don't have to worry about all of the crap that you have to go through in other communities. It's also not going to impact our businesses, the way that some, some resident parking programs could. I think this is really easy for our residents, it's going to cost almost nothing, unless, of course, you have a visitor that's staying for a very long time, more than so many times a month or a year. Congratulations again, thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to congratulate Councilor Condon, I know this is a long effort, and the other committee members, I was able to sit in on almost all the meetings, I think I missed the last one. It is, it is so simple, and it's, it works without being overly onerous on residents. I know this is something I get a lot of questions about, from particularly those that actually live outside the permit zone, because I think that sort of edge area is where some of the abuse or bad behavior, whatever you want to call it, happens, and it just frustrates residents, and I think a simple solution like this is going to be very compelling. The only question I had was this, the caregiver permit, I know one of my constituents had actually raised this caregiver issue, and Ron Hogan had implemented the current permit that's available to caregivers. Does this expand that? So is it just people who are here, like a visiting nurse or somebody providing therapy to a child? Is it broader than that, or is it basically just codifying the same permit that they can get?
I think.
Go ahead, say, Councilor. No, your mic's on, just want to make sure your mic was on, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think it can be broadened for people that have to go to homes.
Okay.
Parking department promised me they would listen.
Okay. And I guess my concern is that as we have a lot of folks who maybe have full-time caregivers that live in a home, that don't necessarily have the car registered here, I wouldn't want to be a burden on those folks that need to have professionals that come to their home, but I also don't want to create a system where people can get around the permit program through that if it's not really a genuine need, or, I think you know what I mean. I don't, I don't want it to be abused, and I'm concerned that we're making, making it too broad, but I think maybe we could come back to that if we find that that's not being used the way it was designed. So, that was my only question.
You all set, Councilor?
Yeah.
Dave Council Linehan, Councilor Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I like to commend my colleague, Paul Condon, as well. I mean, I know, being on the council years and years and years ago, it was something that was kind of a dream to get this thing going, and it never really got off the ground, you know? And I know that myself and Councilor Crowe, you know, as she stated earlier, you know, there is very stringent policy over there in Everett as far as, you know, their parking situation goes, and we have been able to inherit and adopt some of those folks over into our neighborhood, and it makes it difficult for us, because, you know, then we got to tell our constituents, I know, we're working on it. So, this is a great paper, I'm in full support of it. I think it's, you know, you should be congratulated on moving this paper forward and doing a great job, I think it's going to help us all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Semenelli. Councilor Winslow.
No, I appreciate the work of the committee and the sponsor of pushing this forward. I think it is always that struggle, as we have, finding the right balance between regulation and overregulation. I think our parking department's actually done very well in trying to be as fair as possible, and coming up with some very innovative things, so I think this is good. I know, you know, a few years back, there was a, kind of a non-binding vote by wards about whether to have citywide parking restrictions, and Ward 6 actually did not vote for that. So I think this is a very fair thing, I think it works for folks in Ward 6 that, you know, don't have the issues of being near the T station or Everett or whatever, but, but still, you know, we, Malden residents should register their car here, and we should be collecting those taxes, and, and we should be, you know, open and welcome to visitors. So I think this is a very fair balance, and it will work for the Ward 6 residents, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other lights? Well, I was going to speak, do you want to speak again?
No.
I just want to, I want to echo my colleagues, I know a couple of things, first of all, the tenacity and the persistence of Council Condon. This was one of my goals all the time, is getting something like this passed, just because of, there are certain areas in the city that are not covered by permit parking now, and we've seen that permit parking map generally encroach more and more areas, because like a domino effect, if you make this street permit parking, those people that don't have the permit parking just move to the next street, and it's really an inconvenience. And we really had no tools in our arsenal for our parking department to give a ticket out. And I think simplicity would say, or people would say, just pack, parking pass, pass a parking regulation, and it literally took, you know, 16 years, to Council O'Malley's point, but I think every council up here, both present in the past, had some way to help us simplify this, because if you look at some of our sister communities, whether it be Everett, some of them, Cambridge have all these regulations, if you look at their maps, they are literally color-coded, and it takes you, to Council Crowe's point, sometimes a trip to their local city hall in this day and age to get that permit. So simplicity was really the hottest pot to make this, and that's why it took 16 years. We certainly did not want to make this an additional tax, and we didn't want to encumber it on people, we didn't want, we wanted to make this allowing us to have more adequate parking for our residents, and allow us to capture some of that revenue that is due to us if you own and register, you should register in the city of Malden. I, like I always say to my team in my professional life, 16 years to get this passed, SpaceX was formed in 2002, that's 20 years, they put rockets up in space in 20 years, it took us 16 years to pass this, hopefully this resolve.
It's just part-time.
Yeah, it's just a part-time, well, so was it for Elon, right? Elon's doing it part-time, too.
That's what you thought.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I would just, I, I'm excited about this, because I don't, I think this is going to impact every resident who owns a car and is registered in Malden, no, in no, no way, right? And that's the beauty of this. It's, we're really trying to create more space in our neighborhoods, both parking and even for people walking, to have that ability to have more space in the neighborhoods. And then if you are having a car in the city of Malden and it's not registered, you're parking overnight, we can now ask you very nicely to either register your car or find another place to park your car. So I'm very excited, it's very simplistic, and I know several councils up here gave great ideas and insights, so this was really truly something that, that's affecting all our residents in a good way, it's affecting every ward, I think in a good way, and really showed the, the tenacity of Council Condon. In fact, when I was giving out committee assignments, the parking committee was there, and I said, I don't think I would put this in this year, because I don't think we're going to get anything done, and I called up Council Condon, I said, you want to be the chairman of the parking committee? I don't know what's going to happen this year, and he said, absolutely. So, June 7th, we hopefully can pass this resolve and start in this process. To Council Linehan's point, do I think it's perfect? I don't, like most ordinances we pass, let's get something out there, let's see how it impacts the residents, we can always come back. It is a vote for the traffic committee, right? We have to, we have to stress that out, we can pass the buck there. And the other thing, which Council Condon did mention, it's not affecting any of the permit parking areas in the city of Malden. Those stay the same. So any residents that are in a permit parking area now, same rules apply, same fees apply, hopefully you're all up, chances are you're probably not, but those stay the same. Council Condon now.
I'd just like to say thank you, but really, anything that happens in the city, Ron Hogan's the go-to guy, let's face it, and he stayed with it, he knew how important it was to me, and, you know, we talked about it, and he's the one that deserves all the accolades, because he hung, he has so many things that he's involved with. I mean, this building, the police station, you can go on and on, but he's the guy that really is somebody we should appreciate.
Well said, Councilor. All right, so on Councilor Condon's motion, oh, this is a resolve, maybe one second? I do need a second?
Need a second?
Oh, there's a lot of seconds, I think the entire other 10 councillors want to second this, if we can do that. So on Councilor Condon's motion, seconded by the other 10 councillors, you put that in the docket, so everybody sees that, Mr. Clerk?
I don't think Granite has allowed you that.
You can't do that many? You can't do that many?
We can all co-sponsor.
Yeah, can we all, yeah. Yeah, we can all co-sponsor. You mind if we all co-sponsor?
Absolutely.
So we're all going to co-sponsor that, so on Council McDonald's motion that we all co-sponsor, seconded by Council Condon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Everybody's on the record. So on Council Condon and the rest of the councils' motion to pass the resolve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The resolve has been passed, next order of business.
Paper 291-22 Committee Report. The Joint License Rules and Ordinance Committee having considered the paper 255-22, make the following report that the committee recommends this order be reported out favorably to the full council as amended, be it hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Malden at the Municipal Code of Malden, MCC, Title VI, Chapters VIII, Section 100B3, be amended by striking lined and numbered spaces no smaller than 10 by 20, replaced with lined and numbered spaces no smaller than 9 by 18.
On Council Seeker's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Council Seeker for the committee. Oh, I got to put your mic on, I'm sorry, Councilor.
Thank you, Council President. The License Committee met last week with the Building Commissioner. This is pretty much a housekeeping item. When a new business in the city goes to our zoning, it shows 9 by 18 spaces, but when somebody's opening up a new Class II Dallas license in Malden, it shows 10 by 20, so we're just trying to get both of them on the same page, and in uniform, so that people aren't confused when they go to open a new business. This paper was referred out of committee favorably, and I make a motion to grant, well, not grant, approve this paper this evening.
Any questions for Council Seeker on the paper? Oh, sorry, Council McDonald, I'm looking down and expecting somebody to yell my name. Council McDonald.
Sorry.
No, no, it's my call.
Yeah, just, just a question, so, I, I just forget which we're doing. Are we harmonizing the non-zoning section to be, because the non-zoning section is, is currently 10 by 20, and the zoning section is 9 by 18, and so we're changing the non-zoning section to 9 by 18 to harmonize with the zoning section, is that correct? Okay. And that, is that what, because it says 10 by 20 in the order, but that's just recognizing that's what it says there already?
I think it says by amending and by striking line and numbered spaces no smaller than 10 by 20. I think we're striking that, Council McDonald, right?
Okay.
And replacing with lined and numbered spaces no smaller than 9 by 18.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Am I reading that right, just everybody, okay? Okay. I didn't mean to answer, I answered your question, Council Seeker, but that's what me and the clerk were talking about, which one. You all set, Council McDonald?
Yep.
Yep, I just want to make sure he's done. Council Crowe.
I have nothing to add, Council Seeker worked on this, but I just wanted to say that the Licensing Committee, since it was a joint one, voted unanimously as well to support, so thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. On Councilor Seeker's motion to enroll, to enroll the ordinance, seconded by Councilor Semenelli? All those in favor? I have to do the roll call on those ordinance, yeah. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yep.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seeker.
Yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Yes.
Better for her. Better for, yes. Passes.
11-0.
11-nothing, order is enrolled, next order of business.
Docket is clear.
Oh, thank God. Docket is clear. Long night, ladies and gentlemen. I will detain, okay, here we go, they're all lighting up. Council Crowe hit the jeopardy button first, Council Crowe.
My first thing I'd like to say, make motion to adjourn, but before that, the, actually I just wanted to remind people that next Tuesday, June 14th, is Flag Day, so we will be having the annual Flag Day ceremony at Belrock Park under the Flag Defenders Monument. Because it is a council night, we've moved it up till 4 o'clock, that's as early as I can get it, because we do have the Malden High School Band and the Coralot Society, and some of those are still in school. So, I invite everybody to come join us at Belrock Memorial Park under the Flag Defender Monument to celebrate Flag Day.
Thank you, Council Crowe. Council Winslow's next.
Yes, tomorrow at 5:30, we were having a Zoom meeting on Tracton Park Phase 2. This was originally scheduled to be at the park, but because of the weather for the next day, we've, we've converted that to Zoom, so people could reach out to me at swinslow@cityofmalden.com to, if they have any questions about getting on Zoom or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Winslow. Is that linked on the city website, Councilor? Yeah, because I know, okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Malley's next. One second.
Thank, thank you, Council President. I wanna again thank the, the council and, and various, uh, community members. When we signed that petition for a public involvement plan, uh, at the National Grid Site, um, that meeting is tomorrow evening, uh, June 8th from 5:00 PM to 7 o'clock, uh, here at 215 Pleasant Street, Malden City Hall. It will also be simultaneously broadcast on Zoom, uh, as well as participation. So if you'd like to come in via Zoom, uh, it's an early meeting. Again, this is the first meeting where they'll present the draft public involvement plan. Uh, then, there will then be a 20-day comment period, which we can extend to 40 days. Um, I'm just gonna read it a, a little bit of the notice. Um, so again, there's gonna be a DEP Public Involvement Plan related to, uh, the release of oil and/or hazardous materials at the National Grid Site here in Malden Center. Uh, this is release tracking number 3-0036841. Uh, and again, National Grid will be conducting a public meeting regarding the release of hazardous materials that has occurred at the National Grid Site at the intersection of Charleston Commercial, as well as other naming streets, including Center Street and Route 60 in Malden. Uh, again, this is the largest contaminated site in Malden. It's the size of multiple city blocks. It includes public parks, recreational fields, and the Malden River. Uh, for over 100 years, gas was manufactured at this site and contamination is still present and a threat to public health and the environment. Uh, it's, I personally believe and I think that, um, many people in the community think it's time for National Grid to clean up the site, uh, so that future drainage do not have to be exposed to hazardous material in the soil and in the groundwater. Again, the meeting will be tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, June 8th from 5:30 to 7:00 PM here at Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street. And again, you can tune in via, um, Zoom. If you have any questions, you can reach out to me, Ryan O'Malley, Ward Four, romalley@cityofmalden.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes.
I'd like to remind everyone that Malden's first Porch Fest, um, is June 11th, um, from 12 to 7. We have been working so hard and then looking at the weather is really nerve-wracking when you're having something outside. So, uh, Malden Porch Fest Committee wants to let everybody know that even though it looks like there's a 50% chance, let's just hope that goes away, uh, that it's still going on, um, because we could not find another date. There wasn't something happening here in Malden, which is good, but, um, it is rain or shine. Email Malden Porch Fest if you have questions about your particular site. And the second thing is, um, Malden Pride. Uh, they'll be having their event on Saturday, June 18th, uh, 11 to 5:00 PM at, at Corder Malley Park. But I also wanted to say, it, you know, it's Pride Month and if you want to, um, do something to support our LGBTQ plus community right here at Malden, they're looking for donations. Uh, so you can go on their, um, Facebook page and donate there or you can email me and I can send you a link or connect you because, um, they are looking for donations and I really appreciate, um, anyone here who could do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Karen McDonald.
Uh, well, Karen, you took Malden Pride and then you took Porch Fest. I know Amanda's gonna talk about that, but you didn't talk about Juneteenth.
Oh, yeah. I've already been talking about that.
All right, well.
Take it away.
Uh, just a, a reminder, it's just, it's just the event season, uh, and so, uh, appreciation for the first Summer Fest that we had downtown. I think this is our first meeting since then. Um, we've got the Juneteenth Festival coming up at Lincoln Commons in Historic, Ward Seven. Uh, and that's gonna be Sunday, June 19th, also Father's Day, uh, from 11 through 3, free and open to all. So come check that out as well. Um, and, you know, we, I just wanted to take a moment to again acknowledge Dee Campbell Tompkins, who we, we all collectively spent a moment honoring last week when we learned of her passing as a, a real pillar of the civic community and life in this city, an activist for, um, disability rights, for, uh, gay, LGBTQ, um, gender and sexuality equity, um, an advocate for older folks. I mean, Dee, Dee was just a constant presence and it was striking me that every single one of us had a story to tell about Dee. I, um, was one of the folks who was able to make it to her memorial service last Friday, which was really beautiful. So sending my care to her widow Liz, um, and just, um, yeah, appreciation for everything Dee brought to the city. I think of her as my accountability buddy in doing the good work of the council. I think what would Dee, she's one of the people in my head that I said, what would Dee say about this? What would she call me up to yell at me about? And if I know, if I have a sense of that, it's one of the things that, um, guides me as, and I counted her as a, as a friend and, um, and really am saddened by her passing. And it is a time of many losses for us all. So thank you to Dee Campbell Tompkins for being a part of what's made Malden as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, uh, commend the Malden Fire Department. We had a fire on Eastern Ave, uh, Route 60 in, in my district, Ward Seven. And I just happened to come onto the scene, just happened to be driving down the street and they were, uh, in the middle of action. And, uh, it was, it was a pretty tough one. And, uh, I was watching them and, you know, once again, proud of our fire department for doing a great job and, uh, making sure that everybody's safe and the property was, uh, well-maintained as best that it could be. And it's just kinda funny cause, you know, just the Sunday before, uh, this past Sunday, they had their memorial walk from, uh, the Forest Dale School to the Forest Dale Cemetery. So I just, again, wanna take my hat off cause you never know what can happen from day to day and, you know, like, uh, those guys along with the police department, their lives are on the line on, every, every day. And, uh, you never know what's gonna happen out there. So I just wanna just, uh, take my hat off to them and I wanna just, uh, let the, uh, constituents of Ward Seven know that, uh, Operation Beautification is well underway. If you could see some of the islands and you see them all being dressed up with pretty flowers and we're gonna start planting some trees and, uh, start, uh, doing some street sweeping with inside the inner, inner neighborhoods. So, uh, if, uh, anybody needs any help or any blighted areas that you see out there, uh, please give me a call. Again, my, uh, my regular cell phone number, I don't use city phones, so my regular cell phone number is 617-579-6421. And my email is csimmo68@yahoo.com. That's my own. So people keep getting confused about it. There you go. Catch you later.
I was confused, Counsel. Thank you. Told me that csimmo@yahoo.com was not the city email address. I was confused there.
So you know.
Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. President. Um, this is really quick. So, um, this is Protect Your Pet Day. We're gonna take a different turn. We're going to our four-legged friends. So the City of Malden and the Malden Police Department are pleased to announce the return of the annual rabies clinic. This year's clinic will be held Saturday, June 18th, very busy day, uh, from 10 to 12:00 PM at the Malden Fire Station, which is Central Station located at 1 Sprague Street. The cost is $15. As we all know, and Counselor Crowe and I know, going to the vet's like going to Costco. You can't get out, get out of there for under a couple of hundred dollars. So, um, you know, $15 to have your dog or your cat vaccinated is really a great deal, especially in today's economy. Um, the only requirement is your dog must be on a leash and your cat must be in a carrier should you choose to come. Once again, it's Saturday, June 18th from 10 to noon at Central Fire Station, which is located across from Malden High School, 1 Sprague Street. $15 to protect your cat or dog. Thank you.
Co, uh, Counsel Murphy, we do have a question from Counsel O'Malley about, uh, signing up for rabies.
No, I don't believe you do. No. And there also is another great event coming up, but I just can't find the date. I think it's the following week. Uh, the police department and, um, our ACO is actually having Good Dog Appreciation Day. I believe it's the following weekend, so it's gonna be held up at Pine Banks Park and you're, bring your dog and he'll get free ice cream. So I just have to get the date. Is it the 25th? Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you, I couldn't find it. 25th. Free ice cream for the dog.
Counsel Condon.
No, it's Good Dog, it's Good Dog. I mean, yeah. So our four-legged friends can't be forgotten.
Counsel Condon.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Ryan O'Malley for having that moment of silence for Dee Campbell and thank you for your kind words. Dee was just a very, very special person. She used to text me all the time, whether she agreed or disagreed. She, no one researched things like Dee. She, when they tried to, they tried to close that, uh, Lawrence Memorial Hospital, she said, we gotta go over there. She met me over there and she, she gave it all, you know? But, uh, she was such a classy lady, um, and believe me, I didn't always agree with her. She'd stay her side, I'd stay mine, but she was such a dear friend, uh, and her partner, Liz. And when we're putting that co-housing in down there on, uh, Pleasant Street, she organized all the meetings. So she will be sorely missed in this community. She's just a fabulous lady. I don't know if everybody got to know her, but just a tremendous person. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Uh, seeing all the lights, right? Uh, I will just say, uh, real quick, uh, a busy weekend in Malden. There was the, uh, first, uh, Summer Fest downtown. There was the Firefighter Memorial, which Counsel Semenelli and myself were participated in. There was also, uh, the rededication of the, uh, city sale for the class of 1988, uh, which I had to speak for the mayor. I know why, cause it was a two and a half hour ceremony, uh, and it was very hot out there, so great job to them. Uh, I also do want to recognize, um, there is a ceremony to dedicate, uh, the rooftop deck. I don't know if it's the entire deck or a bench, cause I've heard conflicting information. Is it the entire deck? It's the entire deck for Kenneth Desmond Senior.
Ward Seven.
Yes, Ward Seven. So those who don't know, Kenneth Desmond, uh, married his wife, very active in the North Shore Black Women's Association. I think she was a founding member, still lives at Forest Street. Her late husband was a school committee member.
Correct.
Which I always forget about. I don't know which ward. Was he seven? And he ran it large too. Oh, they ran it large for the school committee. Uh, he had a very successful career at AT&amp;T. Uh, and his son, uh, Kenneth Desmond Junior is a judge. Uh, I think he's Superior Court Judge, in fact, just moved up. Uh, so a very entrenched, uh, family in the City of Malden that, that has, uh, given